Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everyone in the audience and those on YouTube. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. Today is Monday, May 13th. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everyone have a chance to look at the agenda. There's no additions or corrections on your team to most to approve.
I make motion to approve the agenda for May 13th.
Do we want to discuss it all, um, executive? Or you want to wait on that?
Let me look. We have.
We've got an agenda at the end of the day.
Um, three-page agenda.
4:30 is an executive item.
Well, we can if you want. You can make it at, uh, let's make it at 4:35, 4:40.
Okay.
Make a motion to amend it without.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we amend the agenda and add a personnel executive session at the end of the day.
Second. Then a motion to second to amend the agenda to add an executive for personnel in the day. Home favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to keep right on going. Our next agenda is an action item. Rita, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I have some questions. So Doug, this is for you. The OHV funds, those are ones we get from the state. Is there a specific, um, process or protocol that people need to go through in order to utilize those funds?
So those funds are actually for specifically for the sheriff's office. I mean, that's who utilizes that funds for the, um, off-road highway vehicle account. So those funds have always been dedicated to the sheriff's office. Is there a specific expenditure that you're?
Well, I'm just, you know, they did a riding clinic. I guess that I'm just questioning. So that is their money. They don't, they budget accordingly? Or do they just use it as things come up?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Moplin, that's correct.
Okay.
So what is this riding clinic? I saw that and it's like, are we teaching, I believe it's how to ride a horse?
No, I think, and the sheriff's here, so he can answer that. But the riding clinic that was had, that's for, is that your new back country deputies for the ATVs? That's what I assume.
Yeah, the back country.
Okay.
So they're learning how to ride stonebills and four-wheelers and ATVs and things like that?
The back country on the steep stuff, getting into cornices and stuff like that for, for us.
Rita, the 55,000 of Falvey, what work was that for?
That was hauling.
No, that's different. That was actually for the Sampson Trail project, Mr. Chairman.
Brush clearing.
Oh, the other one was 16,900. That's right.
That's for OK Gravel.
And that's covered under their grant?
That's correct. And we have already received that reimbursement. So that's in, um, and then those expenditures now are specifically.
For the grant rates. So beyond that, it's 55,000. I mean, what's going over that $50,000 mark? Does that matter?
It's 100,000. Well, that doesn't start till July 1st, does it?
No, they got their, their grant was 200,000.
For request for proposals for that project. That project's already had an RFP conducted on it.
So that is already settled.
Okay.
And then the OK gravel works asphalt hauling?
So allegedly there was an agreement between the road department and recreation to have that hauling conducted. But apparently the road department did not have the bandwidth to haul that. So there was a need to get that product from the location to the site and they contacted OK gravel.
Is that also on the Sampson Trail project?
That's correct.
Okay.
We approved that last week, Doug.
That was, that's 16,900. We, yeah, we did that last week.
To get the job done. Any more questions? Sure there's some more.
I'm good on my own.
One second, I, I had one more.
The bridge fix.
You did the new lake short bills. That's with the 3% increase. That's all mid-fine now.
I did confirm that.
Good, thank you.
South Fork Bridge fix. Where's the South Fork Bridge?
That's the one that's out on Warren, Pass Warren and Cess that the mountain is squeezing together and lifting up part of the bridge. I think.
I think that's right.
We're looking at a contract today under Jeff to have a company come in and set those and monitor that. See what's moving there.
It's just a large claim this time. All right, I'm good.
And we had no junior college.
No junior college. We're kind of in that in-between stage.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the claim board orders and no junior college.
Would you second or favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Uh-oh. There it is. Somebody's been playing with my stand.
I know the other one, Scott Erickson. Oh, he had two large bills. Are those just monthly?
Yep.
Those are his monthly ones.
Ones you, one utilizes the contract and one utilizes.
You can bring it up later and we'll get this part done, at least.
And that cargo rack for the ranger, is that out of OHV funds too?
Yeah, Scott's so excited about that. Has OK already called it out? Was that done?
My understanding it's not done yet, but I would prefer.
Yeah, he's not here. I'm wondering if we should wait to sign this one.
Got to have it done.
I'm going to get it. Like, yeah, we pay for them to haul it.
It gets to him.
Pay first.
Yeah.
Okay. That's a decision for you guys.
Cargo rash for the ranger, is that on the ATV also?
I'm looking right now. Mr. Marketing on one second.
Cargo rack was paid out of the OHV fund?
Okay. Which is in there.
Bear with me.
It was there in my hand.
Yeah, we went over all the.
And I guess.
What'd you do?
So I'm just thinking that OHV fund.
And some stickers.
And can't be used for payroll for the back country.
No, you can't. Only for parts and pieces.
Only for parts and pieces. I don't know that that's a fund I've ever really looked into.
Okay, we're going to move down to our agenda. These are not, these are elected official reports. First one up, Commissioner, or Commissioner, Professor Leiber.
Soon, just a high pick of commissioners.
Soon, very soon.
So just a couple of updates. Our cutoff for our office is May 15th. There are any changes for 2024 at the end of business. So we have to have everything entered by then.
More days.
Shawna Rober, our consulting appraiser with the State Tax Commission, was here last Wednesday. And she did our racial studies. She has commended Anthony on a very well-done analysis. She said our uniformity is tighter than she's ever seen it. So we have, it's.
You got a good crew.
Good job.
I do. I am very blessed. The county's very blessed. And I'm not sure if this is an action item, Doug. We probably need to discuss setting the BOE dates. And I don't know, maybe we could have that discussion. Do we need to make that an action item?
We would, Sister Lieber, but we could definitely have the discussion, then put it on next week's agenda for the commissioners to formally.
Okay, I will not be here next Monday.
Normally we shoot for the last week of June first.
We do. So I just had my calendar up. I was hoping, so June 24th at 5:00 PM is the deadline to appeal. Then we usually get, take Tuesday so we can start preparing them and have enough, get ahead enough to be able to present them to you. So I'm hoping to schedule BOE dates for the 26th, 27th, and 28th of June.
I think that's awesome. And we can make that an action item for next week, 26th.
What, if I emailed you that, would that suffice in my absence?
To get on the agenda or the dates?
Just the dates.
Yeah.
Will you guys just set them?
So we're, the 4th of July is the next week. Normally we take a couple of those dates the next week also.
Yes. I was hoping that we could set aside the first, second, and third, just to be safe.
The first would be a regular commissioner day.
Oh, okay.
Second and third. I wouldn't want to do it on the 5th.
Shoot for the second and third.
Second and third, okay. And then July 8th, we have to adjourn as the Board of Equalization. We got following Monday. So anything that we needed to hear last minute, that could be done on the 8th.
So we'll get that on as an action item next week? Or you will, and then we'll look at those dates and shoot for that.
If you wouldn't mind just sending me an email, myself and Gabby an email, that'd be great.
You bet.
Thank you.
All right, any questions or?
Have you got marker, new construction yet?
Not yet. We will hopefully have that in another week or so. DDL starter certification process on Thursday this week. And I will check with her tomorrow. I have a note on my desk so I can get you those numbers.
Great, thank you.
All right, have a great day.
Thank you. Next victim up is Mr. Miller. One, Douglas.
We share the board. To begin, just want to give you an update on elections. So far, our office has processed 1,063 absentee ballot requests. That does include in-person voting. So we have issued those ballots. The return ballots have been 511. That's actually a pretty good total for right now. It's also a good total for those that have either requested absentee ballots or voted in person. We also are conducting training for our poll workers to be prepared for the election on the 21st. So we do, are preparing our poll workers for the training on the e-poll books, as well as the additional training just regarding the type of ballots that are issued. So we're moving forward with being able to conduct the election on the 21st of May. So just wanted to give the commissioners an update regarding the work that our office is doing to prepare for the election. Any questions?
We'll be on vacation and not stressed about it.
Budget.
We're going to do you right here.
We have finalized all of our in-person or preliminary workshops or.
Good.
Interactions with the elected officials and the department heads regarding their request for their fiscal year 2025 budget. The concern that I have is that the agendas for the commissioners are getting fully booked on the Mondays. And I'm wondering if the commissioners would be willing to potentially meet on Tuesdays for budget workshops. So having the regular commissioner meeting on Monday with an additional day on Tuesday for budget workshops. But I wanted to approach the commissioners to see if they would be willing to do that and seeing what's your.
That would be an open meeting, open session.
Correct. It would be when the elected officials and department heads are coming to the commissioners to review with you their requests that are being made.
You think in a couple of Tuesdays?
I am, yeah, initially a couple, and then we'll see how many we can get through to determine if there's more that we need to do. And I don't know if the commissioners would be inclined to begin this in May or if they would prefer to do this in June.
So I won't be available for the next two weeks. Our next one will be the 28th, which that's already a meeting. That's already our regularly scheduled. So I would prefer, and then on the 4th, we are in IAC conference. So I mean, if we go to June 11th.
What we can do is see if we can get, see how many elected officials and department heads we can get on the agendas, say for the Mondays. But if the commissioner meetings start getting too booked, just would respectfully ask that we have an additional day specifically related to the budget workshops.
We can just get in our schedules so we don't.
Looks like the 11th and the 18th of June might work, Doug.
Okay, thank you for the guidance. I do have an action item. I'll just get to that. There is a company that would be, would like to begin e-recording with our office. Currently, we just allow Simplefile to be the company that is, has the ability to connect directly to our recording software in, uh, in order to have customers record virtually with them, not for, basically it's called e-filing. So that company is CSC. That was in your packet. It's a memorandum of an agreement, excuse me, memorandum of understanding agreement. There is no money that's going to be exchanged. It just allows them to be able to connect to our new Eagle recording software in order to have another entity be able to provide this service to the public.
You're recording it, I mean, it's recording like what we do here. I mean, P and Z, does it record everything?
So what it does is records deeds. So it's any recorded document that meets our criteria, provides a legal description. It's, it's an original document. So it's for deeds, it's for quick claims, anything of that nature that's recorded with the recording, with our office.
It's the title companies.
Title companies.
Does that get it on Laserfish?
So.
I'm not quite sure.
It actually, it, it's, it's a recorded, okay, so it doesn't get it on Laserfish, but it gets it within our recording system. So it is an official recorded document.
And do you think down the road they're going to want to charge for this or is it just really simple?
They, okay, so we do have to charge the individual that's using it a fee, right? But we're not charging, we're not, they are charging us to be able to utilize this service. We are charging them to be able to utilize this service. And there's a set rate for recordings for our office.
Is there any concern about cybersecurity or anything like that that Jeremy's looked at?
I mean, there's always a risk, you know, there's always a risk to determine if it's an official recorded document. But that's why they utilize this company. That company takes that liability on.
Is this something I like writing them use for people coming in and asking for records, you know? It won't have nothing to do with that.
No, this is just simply allowing individuals to e-record or e-file documents with our office.
Most of all.
It's not that they're coming in here. They can, this allows them to get onto your system to record.
This allows them to, to send a recorded, I apologize if I'm not explaining it well enough. This is allows an outside or a separate company. So if a member of, as Commissioner Moplin's indicating, if a title company wants to record a document with us, but is unable to physically bring that document to us, they can use this company to process it. Currently, we only allow one company to do that, which is Simplefile. This is an additional company that would be able to provide this service to a member of the public or a title company or another individual that wants to record a document with our office, but can't physically bring that document to us. It is allowed under Idaho code to be able to do this. It's just another, um, another company that has the ability to do it. When that document comes to us, it, I guess is stored, uh, in a, in a portal, right? And then our staff member, my deputy recorder, has to go into that portal, look at all of the e-recorded documents that want to be processed. She goes through her checklist. Is it an original document? Does it have the legal description? Is it meeting the criteria? If it does, then she accepts it and then it's processed. It puts an e, it puts a recording on it, it puts a label on it. Then the deputy recorder has to sign that, file it, assign it an instrument number. And then once that is processed, payment is, there's also a payment that's processed. And once the document is, goes through all of those steps, it's officially recorded. And then the company receives a notice, this document is recorded. Here's the instrument number. That's the formal process. I apologize for my long explanation.
That's how they get paid.
Yes. Item, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the CS memorandum of understanding for e-recording.
Second. Would you second or favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else, Doug?
A few things, but I will allow others to present.
Take all of your time. You're being very good with titles too, so Clerk Miller.
Tried to.
As we should be better about.
Uh, we had, uh, our, was it transition to a new updated software in the clerks or in the court's office for Navigator that went live today. We do have some struggles, but we do have tickets in with the Idaho Supreme Court. So we're working through that right now. And I think in general, that's all I have to report. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Doug, there is another form we have to sign with this. It's not in there. This one about Israel and China.
Package.
Definitely are losing it. Okay, we're going to keep right on going. Next one up is prosecutor, Mr. Nagle. Good morning.
Good morning. I have a whole lot. The Civil Division would like me to remind you that we have a closing on the property over there. The merit title property on the 21st of this month.
On the 21st, okay.
A week from Wednesday.
Do we have a time?
No time yet. Uh, yeah, we don't have a time yet, I guess.
They didn't get resolved last week too, that else going to sign on behalf of the county? Okay, perfect.
Mr. Okey, Mr. Nagle, do we need to process the claim prior to closing as well then? Is that an accurate statement?
This isn't the claim.
For payment?
No. No, that'll come after and you'll just pay the, uh, the title company.
So we're supposed to wire the funds to title? So, but we can't close without that wire being there. So you can sign on the 21st, but for it to fund, those monies have to be there.
Right.
So therefore I'm going to assume that you got to have the money on the 21st.
Same day. I'll, I'll get that worked out for you.
If you can confirm. Thank you, Mr. Okey. We'll just need some information regarding the wiring information and things of that nature.
If you pay the claim on Monday, then you can actually have, you know, just enough time. My past experience, you got to have it wired by, I think it's either one or two in the afternoon to get there a day, so.
So Doug, we're going to have the claim next week?
Correct.
Just one claim, just make sure we get that done. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay. Outside of that, the criminal side of things remains very busy. Because as of the middle of April, we were, we had something like 240 more cases this year than we had last year, criminal cases. So just a busy time and a lot of, a lot of cases we've seen. Just anecdotally, I'd say we've seen a significant increase in the number of domestic violence cases, drug cases, those sorts of things, so.
I want to say thank you because there's a lot of prosecutors not prosecuting crimes and therefore people are not bringing those charges. So I really appreciate you, you know, taking the time, the energy, and having the experience to actually clean this up in the county.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Obviously couldn't do it without the help of the sheriff's office, the McCall Police Department. Our law enforcement agency is here. We did a joint training over in McCall with both the sheriff's office and the McCall Police Department. I did some training over there just on evidence gathering and report writing. Open that we can continue to do that. That's been, that's been good. It's a productive thing to do. It's something that I, I did quite a bit down in Ada County when I was there. So those, those training sessions have been good. Great, great law enforcement partners here, so we're just cruising along.
We liked your article that you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that was an article I wrote for the Advocate at the request of my, my old boss Jan down in, in Ada County. Asked me if I'd be, the Advocate is a publication that the bar puts out every month. And this month they were, they, they did a special publication just on prosecution work. And so, and so I.
Adams County doesn't have a prosecutor running. I mean, that's going to hurt their county.
Yeah, yeah, and they're not the only one. There's other counties, I think, that are, that are, you know, struggling to find prosecutors. And, you know, when I go to conferences, when I go to like the Idaho Prosecuting Attorneys Association Conference, every time now, like, this didn't ever used to be the case. I mean, just even two years ago, it wasn't the case. But now, in the last year, every time I've gone there, when the elected prosecutors, we all get together, we sit in a room, we talk about, you know, upcoming legislation, we talk about things, challenges in our counties and stuff. And by far, the number one issue that everybody has is hiring prosecutors and police. There are, there are probably a majority of the counties in our state have, are understaffed. They don't, they have empty positions, positions that, that are, that are left unfilled because, not because they don't have qualified applicants, but because they don't have applicants. And so it's, it's crazy because when I, when I applied for this job back in, you know, when I became a prosecutor back in '05, they were competitive. Like, it was, it was hard to get these jobs. It was a, it was a competitive thing. But these days, it's, it's very different. And hopefully that pendulum will swing back, but it's a, it's kind of a challenging time for sure.
Did you see any light at the end of the tunnel on the, that's penalty case?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's working through the, we're going to have a scheduling conference this, this week on Friday. And then, you know, we'll, we'll probably set it for trial sometime, maybe towards the end of the year. Those, those tend to work along kind of slowly. But I'm, I'm pretty optimistic about resolving that case eventually.
Can we hear back from Capital Crimes Defense Fund? Did they, that letter went out last week?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't include Mr. Nagle, but we did apply for the Capital Defense Crime Fund. And we have not heard if we have been awarded reimbursement or not, but I assume that they're processing the application.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like you guys are busy though.
We are, we are very busy. We're okay for now. We're, we're cruising along. We got a good, we got a good crew between Oak and Arnie carrying the load on the civil side, which is also very busy, especially this time of year with tax season and all that. You know, they're, they're doing all they can on their side. But so far, Ashley and I have, have done just fine keeping up. We did have, we had a jury trial this last, since we last met, got a conviction on a fishing game violation. And then I think we'll probably have another fishing game-related jury trial. It's at least set for next week. So, you know, we're, we're having a few, a few jury trials here and there. And for the most part, we've been able to, to keep our heads above water. So hopefully this, hopefully this summer won't be too much of a deluge.
I think it's going to be wild and crazy this summer.
It might be.
Already started. Thank you very much for your service and your help.
It's my pleasure. Any questions? Any questions?
Good.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Brian. Next one up, Sheriff.
Morning, Commissioners. Not a ton to report on my end either, numbers. This time of year, they're just about the same at the jail. Um, patrol's been busy, obviously, thanks to our prosecutor's office and everything. Um, I can just tell you that when you have a prosecutor that wants to prosecute cases, the deputies and police officers are a lot more willing to put in a lot more work and bring a lot more cases in, and we just, uh, handed them over a pretty good one again last week. Um, so, so the arrests are up, I mean, we're just, we're plugging along and, uh, and we're busy and, like I said, we couldn't do without a prosecutor. And so, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Mopin said, having a prosecutor of this caliber that will actually take our cases and go to the mat with them when they need to, make everybody know that this is not the place to come screw around, because law enforcement backed up with the prosecutor, will, will take it and, and make you accountable for your actions. So, I, I'd like to just, uh, compliment them as well, 'cause, uh, it's, it's been great with Civil and everything else. Um, the only thing that I'm, uh, getting a lot of questions about, and I'm not sure on, uh, on coming up with money for it, is I'm getting questioned by a lot of people, quite frankly, uh, when the sheriff will actually close West Mountain Road due to it being almost impassable, uh, four-wheel drives not being able to make it up the hill over there, um, south of Tamarack. And so, I don't know how we're gonna come up with money to fix that, but I know it's darn near impossible, and I don't know that you'd get an emergency vehicle in there after rain or a muddy, muddy season like this, so, it's something we're probably gonna have to discuss.
Is that below that subdivision that's south of Tamarack? Is that where the road's bad or is it before you get there?
Yeah, there's, there's one hill out there, right, just this, uh, the other side of God's Acres, that's, that's pretty, pretty bad. Like, we, we had a, we had a deputy that was very unhappy with it that lived out there.
Is it just shredded up or is it still muddy?
It's so muddy that, and it's greasy, it's that, that clay grease that just even a four-wheel drive's having a real hard time getting up it. And, uh, there's been...
You'll ask.
Yeah, there's been times that...
You'll ask Jeff when he comes in.
Even forest service trucks are stuck in the middle of the road, four-wheel drive, so, I mean, so...
Oh, my goodness.
And I know, I know that, you know, everyone's bringing their heavy trucks and trailers over and that keeps blowing the rocks out below, and I understand that, but I've, I've been contacted by, by other elected officials, as well as several citizens, that asked, "At what point will the sheriff just close the road?" 'Cause it's just, it's not safe. And so, I just thought maybe that we can all talk about that sometime and come up with a plan or get with Jeff.
Could you be, when Jeff presents at 11?
Yes. I'll, I'll talk to Jeff.
This may be one of the roads that turned over on him this year, and he's waiting for it to dry out, but it needs to be fixed before.
Well, that, I think that, that's our biggest problem. That's what I tried to explain to everybody, is, as long as I've been here, I've never seen such a muddy winter. We never got that hard freeze to where we're driving on froes. And so, I, I know it's been a lot harder, but it's, it's an issue a lot, it's, it's come up a lot. So, I just kinda wanted to put it, I know that budgeting's tough and coming up with it.
And get, we went through the same thing last year on Thunder City Road, so...
And I, I know, the road department can only do so much, there's so many lane miles here, and I'm, I'm surely not throwing rocks at the road department, 'cause that's not our intention. I don't think that's anybody's intention. It's just that that's a stretch of road that's pretty bad, and, and that is kinda like when somebody says, "Well, they're speeding on this road." Yeah, they're speeding on every road, and, and so, so, I just, but I've heard this one from several people, so I just wanted to make the commission aware of it, and maybe we could come up with some sort of a plan on getting a base in there or something.
It's a speed trap, they can't speed on it.
No, they're not speeding on it.
So, one road they can't speed on.
So.
Okay.
Any questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next one up is Treasurer, Johanna.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, I've got a few updates for you and then a, an action item. Uh, just wanted to keep you apprised on the tax deed process. When we sent out the certified letters, we had 34 properties on that list. As of this morning, we're down to 20 left on the list, which is about, uh, the same as what we were at last year. Next Thursday, you'll start to see the beginning of the advertisements come out in the newspaper, and that tends to drop those numbers down on the list as well. So, working, working through that process. Um, I have some good news with the, uh, employment update in the Treasurer's office, so we, uh, hired the elections coordinator position, and she, that individual is going to start this week. Kirsten Oxford is her name. So, she'll be a shared employee between the clerk's office and the Treasurer's office. Um, obviously, with the election just right around the corner, she'll probably spend quite a bit of her first few weeks down in the clerk's office, and then I'm hoping to get her up, uh, in my office around June, so that she can help, uh, get trained and transitioned in there as well.
Man, can you give us that name again?
Kirsten Oxford.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Wait a minute. Interviewed her.
For the Wildland...
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, she was impressive.
She did mention that, yes. Uh, we, uh...
A good hire.
We are very excited about having her come on. So, I believe she's gonna, um, come in today. Yeah, she's here. So, um, if you get a chance, say hi, welcome her to the team, we're really excited to have her. Um, and then, the other position in my office, I have also filled. I hired Robin Chapman as the Senior Deputy Treasurer, and, um, she's moving from out of town and will be here at the end of May, and we have a start date figured for June 4th. So, hoping to be fully staffed by the, uh, busy tax season.
Tax drive.
Yes. Um, and speaking of tax drive, we are gonna start the process today to get those reminder notices sent out. My goal is to have them sent to the printing company by Wednesday with the idea of having them mailed and/or emailed, if you're signed up for email updates, on Monday, the 20th, which gives them exactly 30 days to get bills paid.
Good.
So, we will be picking up, if you hear the phone ringing off the hook over there in the Treasurer's office, where Alisa and I will do our best to try to keep it under control for the time being, till we can get more staff. So, um, all right, so my action items are, uh, with the promotion of Alisa to Chief Deputy, I need to add her as a signer to all of our bank accounts. Um, a couple of our different bank accounts have different requirements for how to change signers in and out. Um, and so I have three different, uh, forms up here that need to be signed. Uh, the first is the LGIP, the Local Government Investment Pool. To make any contact change on this account, we need one of the commissioners' signatures to do so, so that's to take somebody off or to add somebody on. So, what I've done is I've completed this form to add Alisa Bailey and to remove Casey Mock. Uh, that's number one. Number two is with, uh, Multibank Securities. This is our investment broker, uh, that we have. This also requires, it doesn't require, um, I could've signed this one, but I feel like it's, uh, good practice to keep the commissioners involved in, in these types of things. So, this would also be, um, adding Alisa Bailey. We did not need a signature to remove Casey from this one, um, but I have a signature line on this form as well. And then, the third one is with Umpqua Bank, and since we've established our account at Umpqua Bank, they've changed some of their policies, and what they are recommending is that, um, we designate a, a couple authorized individuals who are able to make changes to contact information and signers on the account. This individual does not necessarily, well, let me start over. One of the individuals needs to be a signer on the account, but they recommend that we also designate a second individual who does not necessarily need to be a signer on the account. So, I would like to, uh, identify one of the commissioners to be this authorized person. Um, I would need them to complete this form. It's got some sensitive information on it, so I would ask that I leave the form with you and that you get it to Umpqua Bank, so that I, I, uh, am not in charge of the sensitive information on the form. Um, and typically, this would be the chairman of the board, but, Mr. Chairman, since you are looking towards the end of your, uh, career, I would recommend that we have Commissioner Mopin be this person, if she would be willing to do it. Um, and then, we'll have to reevaluate once you decide, uh, what your path is after the end of your next term, so...
And then, if there's any bad checks, you just cover it out of your purse.
No, this, this one...
Send me the night before.
This just allows you, uh, it allows the county kind of a fallback, so if something were to happen to me and I'm the, the authorized user, it would allow you to help get a new treasurer appointed and, and put on our, our bank accounts without having to have me cooperate, so...
That makes sense, yeah. So, IFB?
Um, IFB, we do not need any, uh, commissioner approval for those. So, on those accounts, all of our debit card accounts, the department head, myself and my chief deputy are all signers, and then on all of our just plain county accounts, it's just myself and my chief deputy. So, we went through and had all of the e-document sent out for that last week, and the department heads are probably wanting to, uh, chat with me about all the emails they've been getting about it, but I believe that all of those signatures have been completed and the accounts have been transferred.
'Cause we needed a motion to state all that and put Commissioner Mopin in charge of, uh, signing all those for, you need a commissioner's signature. So, I'll make that motion, I don't know how to word it, Doug, but to update the signatures on the LGIP, the Multibank Securities, and Umpqua Bank and designate Commissioner Mopin as the commissioner signee. I'll second that. That work? Okay, we got a motion second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. From Garys.
All right, so here's the Umpqua Bank form, you're gonna just fill that out, and I'd be happy to help you get it to them if you need me to, or you can drop it off. These ones, I've already filled out with your name, the signature's on the back of, uh, let's see, on the third page, this one here. And then, this one, just write...
Asking for the name of my future grandchildren. There's a lot on there.
You only have to fill out two. Pick two and, uh, pick two of the questions.
Oh, I'm going, okay. Name of your favorite restaurant in college. I remember college, my, my favorite restaurant.
All right, and that's everything for me, unless you have any questions.
Congratulations, Alisa.
Yeah, awesome.
Yep. Very exciting.
Things always change.
Yes.
She's still smiling, so that's a good... Okay, we're gonna keep on going with our agenda, and the next is department heads, and Net was unavailable today, she's pretty busy, so DeeDee.
Did have good information, though. Yeah. They're busy.
Morning.
Good morning. How are ya?
I'm all right, hanging in there. I'm learning that whenever I go in to dig into some details to clean some things up, there's more details looming underneath.
Amazing, isn't it?
Yes, so I'll be one of my new job descriptions, as detail sorterouter. So, today, since it's juvenile, just do juvenile probation stuff today. Um, right after the commissioners today, I start the interview process for our new juvenile probation officer. We had seven candidates and, uh, reached out to five of them, um, and four of them responded, so I'm really excited to see what we have in store. Be a hard, hard job to fill, considering that, since I did it, I'd be watching them the whole time. So, I hope, bless them for that. Um, no detentions, 19 currently, uh, with juvenile probation, I understand. There's last week that, uh, prosecution had reached out about several new diversions and some other cases that might be coming through, so we're gonna have a pretty good bump in numbers coming up. Ten of those are diversion currently, five are pending, uh, and four active probation. Just for, just for numbers, for just juvenile drug testing, I did 31 tests last month and only four showed positive. Other things, just to know, uh, the juvenile justice world, we are losing a pretty good chunk of money, uh, throughout the state when it comes to SUDS funding. Uh, it's come, I think the, I wanna say it's like almost half, so like the juvenile that we sent to inpatient treatment, uh, who's doing quite, quite well, um, we're gonna lose some of that.
Is that from state?
Mm-hmm. Yep, and we share that, of course, with Boise County, Ada County, and Elmore County, so...
Was that because it was ARPA funding, or is it just a line item budget that they're no longer funding?
I think it comes, I better not answer, I'm not sure. I wanna say it comes federally, and the federal government's not giving it anymore, um, but I don't know completely.
Interesting. Would you research that and let us know, and maybe we can reach out to the governor's office and ask why?
Because it's actually part of the action item today as well. Um, been doing lots of training within our department. Uh, Ashley Moore for the prosecutor's office and I are gonna go to a training at the Idaho, with the Idaho Juvenile Justice, uh, Commission on the de-institutionalization of, uh, status offenders, that's in June. Hmm, two of us, Molly and Jacques are going to ICAD, uh, tomorrow and Wednesday, and that's the conference on alcohol and drug dependency. I speak at that conference on Wednesday, so I'm just going down probably for the night and then gonna come back up on Wednesday after my session is completed. And I think that's it for the moment, um, except for the action items, so we'll go into that. So, in front of you is a memorandum, memorandum of understanding, just a sharing, it seems to be, quite a bit you guys are getting that today. Uh, this is the document where, uh, counties should let the state know that indeed we're gonna be good partners in working with CBASS. CBASS is Community-Based Alternative Services Program and the Substance Abuse Disorder Services, SUDS. Those are two different pots of money. The SUDS, uh, assists with, uh, drug and alcohol needs, uh, whether it be assessments, um, outpatient treatment, all the way up to inpatient treatment, which we do utilize quite a bit. This is the first year that we're over budget, so I am hoping that the cuts aren't gonna hurt too bad, but, I mean, we did, we had two, at least even in our region, uh, two inpatient treatment stays, and those are hundred to $200,000, it's 300 bucks a night for inpatient treatment that someone has to pay for. Um, Medicaid, uh, pays for a lot of stuff, but then we also have kids that are in that gap, so that's SUDS funding.
A good question on that before we move on. Where do they go for the stream? Is this down in Boise, like Cottonwood, or is that up here?
The substance abuse is Cottonwood's mental health, uh, but we have, uh, a drug and alcohol assessment for outpatient treatment here in our local area, and, uh, we utilize it quite a bit, from anything from the assessments all the way out to intensive outpatient treatment. And we do work within our community, 'cause, uh, we don't necessarily have an intensive outpatient treatment for juveniles up here, but we've been able to access other counselors and other stuff to give them the hours that they need to be able to do that. So, if we can, we will absolutely keep them here.
But that keeps the money here as well.
Uh-huh, oh, yeah. And then the, uh, uh, inpatient treatment, there's, those are dwindling too within our state. There's only a couple left. There's one in, um, MK Place in Pocatello, there's, um, the Healing Lodge up in Cordillane, and I'm missing one.
Indian Mountain Hospital doesn't do that either?
Drug and alcohol? They have an, uh, intensive outpatient treatment, which is basically there, but it's really short-term, and I, they don't take SUDS funding.
Oh, okay. So, where's the funding come from for all these services?
Yeah, that's what she's gonna have me research the exact, I don't wanna give, I wanna say again, it's federal, and then it kinda drips down to states, but I wanna, I don't know the sh, the exact route of that.
Right, right.
So, I'll research it.
We might be able to at least be supportive with conversations, even at the federal level, but, um, and more importantly, how much are we gonna lose, so, and is there any mechanism within our county to help support?
I appreciate that.
That would be an interesting conversation, so...
Yeah, thank you. And so, the CBASS money, uh, the, again, the Community-Based Alternative Services, that's through the department, of course, for any, any gap of funding for any county throughout the whole state, to have a kid to be able to not go to detention, or detention or the Department of Juvenile Corrections. They put a lot of money available for all of us, for kids to be able to access treatment so that they're not being housed under the state. Um, so, I use those up front, I can use those at the back end, um, I've used them this Um, I've used them this year for sexually offending specific behavior. I've used it for counseling, I've used it for, um, uh, like tutoring sometimes I can use it for, or mentoring. I have a good mentoring. So anything outside the box that we have up here, uh, and that's always gonna be my argument with them is everything appears outside the box, you know? And so I always have to try to wedge whatever we have in a box so that we can get access to this money so they can stay within our community. So they've been fantastic. So that's what you're getting is the memorandum of understanding that indeed this county will participate or continue to participate in that. It is no cost to us. All the work that needs to be done is through our department, the juvenile probation department. So they're gonna ask about, uh, you know, making sure that we have a YLS done, which is a risk assessment tool. So there's some things that they're gonna need from us as well. It is then our role to go work with those within our community and, and bring back their, uh, do all the vetting to make sure that they, they are a viable, um, uh, company or agency or person to be able to work with. If they're being inappropriate funding-wise, anything like that, we pull it. But we're the, uh, probation department, we'll be supervising all of that.
So DeeDee, in the contract with IDJC, part B, it talks about reimburse the county.
Yes.
Until funds have been exhausted. So the county pays the bill and then we put in for reimbursement?
Uh, only if the county is paying for that, for example, and I've not, ever since I've been up here, I've never asked the county to pay for something like that, except for once. And that was for a sexual offender, it's called a PSC, it's a psychosexual evaluation. So if the county, if the court orders someone to get that done so they can understand the risk for sexual offending behavior and where they are, then I can ask this entity to reimburse the county for that.
So that was my next question, who files for reimbursement?
I've, again, I've never done it before, so I'm gonna assume, I don't know. I've just never done it, so I guess I'll talk with the clerk.
The core service director would file for the reimbursement.
Yeah, thank you, I would.
He would. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the MOU for the Community-Based Alternative Service Program and Substance Use Disorder Program.
Second, I'm gonna second it, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and all three of us sign this, come on up.
Thank you. It's highlighted, the county clerk also sounds, signs two, please.
Our liaison can assist you with that. Alicia can assist you with that.
Details.
Yep.
He's truly the brains of the county, nobody knows that.
Don't put me, I'm just a brains.
Just playing the dog. We know we're not.
Thank you. Bring this off yourself. Most of you, if it's signed by Multi or Director Prado, then just, you'll email it to probably Alicia or if it's assigned. If you want, you know, it's a copy of it. It's for, for reaching purposes.
Good luck with your interviews.
Yeah, I'm excited and terrified.
That was good to get that many applicants.
It was, and there are a range of experience, so.
Nice.
So could be a whole lot more of my time coming.
Well, whoever.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Just paper.
Commissioner Mopin, we were asking how much is left, left in that OHV fund, there's thirty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Okay, we're gonna keep on going, Melissa. Extension Office, good morning.
Good morning. So I'll report out on 4H and then I'll report out on what I've been up to. And, um, then take any questions. So for 4H, there's a sheep weigh-in on May fifteenth, so this Wednesday, there'll be eight goat and twenty-six sheep members. Lee and Allison attended a 4H Youth Development Virtual Conference last week, and that was three days long. And it focused on building youth resilience, purpose, and readiness. The Fair Book is almost ready for publishing, hope to have it out before Memorial Day weekend. Junior livestock superintendent applications are due this week, and they're doing a benefit fundraiser yard sale on Saturday, May twenty-fifth.
Did you say those poor girls have been hitting at a three-day virtual conference?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought a three-hour Zoom conference.
Sorry.
You have to sit there.
I don't, I don't know how it was structured, yeah, but I've done some virtual conferences, but that was during the, the COVID.
Yeah.
Um.
Miserable.
Zoom fatigue, anyone? Um, I have been involved with a lot of the community gardens. And so the Bian Venidos Community Garden had a service day with Alzar students. I was mentioning that I was doing some of the logistics for that. Um, we were able to get a donation from Idaho First Source, uh, they did some redwood lumber. And so it's a really nice wood for two beds that were constructed at the Alzar Field Day. And then we took some of that lumber and patched up the beds for part of the pantry plots. Um, those beds were established ten years ago and I was part of that initiative in twenty-fourteen, basically right when I came on, uh, in my position. And so there's a lot of depreciation that's happened in that space. And so coming back into it, um, we're, we're gonna be working on like a depreciation plan and how we can essentially get that space, um, repaired each year incrementally, rather than trying to figure out how to do that all at once or all of a sudden being like, oh man, this, this space is done. So there was also a fence that needed construction. And, um, the committee that's involved and at the table are a group of very dedicated volunteers. And so, um, sitting around the table with them is always a pleasure to have, you know, the, the go-getters at the table. And, uh, they, we also constructed a, a fence that field day. And it was just a steel post fence with hog panel, but it looks really sharp. And the fence, uh, as everyone knows, or I imagine everyone knows, is a really critical part of infrastructure for gardening, um, in our area. And so that space is now defensible against wildlife. And the fence, uh, a portion of that fence has been constructed with the fence project, um, being kind of on the top of our radar for next year, as well as trying to repair beds, maybe two beds each year over the next ten years, and that would repair the, I think there's thirty-two beds in those spaces. Um, so anyway, doing some, some commit, um, committee work and trying to get volunteers plugged into those efforts. And also updated the bylaws and the garden guidelines for that space. And then they raised the, uh, fees in that space for, for garden bed each season. Um, continuing to work with the Master Gardeners, and this is, uh, the first year that they've done all types of learning. So asynchronous as well as synchronous, as well as in-person. And so it's not death by Zoom, which is what we did during COVID, in my opinion, for the Master Gardener course, so it was just a lot of Zoom time. And so, um, feeling really good about the new remodel of delivery of that Master Gardener program. And then I'm incorporating service days into that to do some structured, um, volunteerism where people can then get on like experiential learning as well as out there providing service. And so the Master Gardeners were at both of those community garden events, getting some hands-on learning. And, uh, I thought that was, worked really well and we have some other in-person events planned for up the, the summer.
Yeah, pretty good turnout from the public.
I usually get about ten, uh, every other year, and so I only offer it once every two years, uh, because we don't have a huge audience, like Ada County has a waiting list, people away. But it is interesting that I get second property owners, you know, so people that have a property here as well as down at Ada and they get on the waiting list or they can't get in down there and they'll, they'll take it up here. And they're two very different classes. Um, so it's a small group, but it's a, in my opinion, it's a really wonderful group because they're very dedicated to getting out there and giving back to their community and they're lifelong learners. And, uh, it's just a good group of folks. So a small but powerful, Master Gardener cohort. And so this year I had, um, ten people register, and so that was like my, okay, that's a go. And I did have some people, um, either have to drop out or they wanted to switch to audit. And I tried to do some clarity around the volunteer program. Um, because essentially it is learn and then give back. And if you plan on auditing, I had people, you know, pay an extra hundred bucks to audit the course if they didn't have an intention to volunteer. And so I restructured a little bit and then people kind of shuffled and said, no, I want to audit, or I want to take the class and do the volunteer work. But I think that, you know, I'm just always tweaking that class to try to make it as best as it can be.
Who teaches, I mean, you have people like John Schultz teaching the class, or you, who, who actually teaches this class?
So the online, uh, portion of it, we have an e-learning portal. And so we have educators from all the way around the state doing different, like one hour, approximately one hour modules. Sometimes they're twenty minutes, forty minutes, but no longer than an hour. And, um, there's a lot of content that's, that's listed in those, each of those modules. And so it's extension educators from around the state teaching it. And then we do our in-person, um, field days where we'll have local people come in and present. And so we had a state, um, and I, I don't remember his name right now, it's just blanking, but he came up from Boise to teach about firewise. Uh, Steve Anderson came in to talk about invasive weeds. Um, and so we have local information that's diffused during the in-person. And then the Long Valley Gardening Club has been really hot this year, in my opinion, with their volun, with their, uh, field trips. And so I've plugged in their field trips and encouraged Master Gardeners to be part of that because they're doing things like going out to see John Schultz's greenhouse. And so there's just a ton of different learning and really trying to weave it in altogether of, of, these are all the different opportunities. And we have an online calendar. And every time I learn about something, like including Steve Anderson's workshop last week for weeds, I plug it into that calendar and then, um, the Master Gardeners can, can go out and be part of that. So yeah, we, we weave in local voices as well as have statewide presence of educators. There's a lot of content.
Our wise girl right back there.
I know, she, we invited, um, her to come and she, that weekend didn't work for her. So, um, she, she referred us to the, what was it, Brad, I forget his name, Brad, Brad. Yeah, so she referred us to Brad and then Brad came up. And he's gonna be retiring up in Cascade Area, so it's nice, it was good.
Nice.
Um, any other questions about the, the Master Gardener course? Okay, it's a good course. Uh, there's a vandal alumni event at Lardo's and.
Boo. Oh, sorry.
Um, I've never tapped into that group or seen who's, who's come. And, uh, and so I plan on attending that and bringing my newsletter signup sheet, just to see if there's a different cohort of the community that we can engage with or that I can engage with. Are you, are you saying boo because you're a BSU fan or?
Of course.
Okay. See, I have no bias, I'm, I'm like, just go on to get your advanced degree and then, you know, that's all good.
Really either, I just like to stir the water a little bit.
Yeah, and I'm just like, huh?
Put together orange, black, blue, and orange, you get a really interesting color.
She's gonna get her house toilet paper, that's what's gonna happen.
Um, there's a cultivating success training next week in Caldwell, so that'll be on Tuesday and Wednesday. And, uh, that's where statewide educators come together that do this small skill, uh, agriculture programming. And that was the webinar that I was part of this spring. Um, and then there's a, a course, or, I forget what, it's titled, um, Starting Your Sustainable, I don't know, Your Small Farm Dream or something like that. And so we've offered that in the past, uh, locally. And we haven't offered one in a while, so we're kind of trying to figure out how to launch that and how we're gonna do it. Um, I have two applicants for an internship. And I will be hiring that person on and the focus for that is horticulture, community gardens. Um, and then depending on people's skillsets, I might have them work on the Food Coalition, like upping the map and trying to get the webpage refreshed. Um, budget meeting, I'll see you at today at one. And then continuing to be an active leader as far as, uh, like the chair for the Creative Arts District effort and the Food Coalition. And currently doing some research on natural, natural resource management plans with Commissioner Mopin. Um, and continuing to be part of the ELAC and Economic Development Council. And then if there's a need for visioning surrounding future fairground efforts, um, please feel free to reach out and I'm happy to be of service with that.
You know, Melissa, since you brought that up, I know, you know, a few years ago, we contacted Cambridge about their facilities there for 4H and they said that they thought they had copies of the schematics of that. I wondered if you could chase that down.
I can try.
See if you can get a copy of those plans. I think we need like a, someplace to start, so to speak. And if people, I don't know if you guys have ever been in that facility, but it is pretty awesome.
Have you got, is that out?
Huh?
Which facility is that?
It's the fairgrounds there, as you come into Cambridge on the left.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they actually, I think, if I remember right, they got most of that building donated by RM Steel.
Yeah, and I know that the Oahu County, um, fairgrounds, I think they, they might have had an RM Steel kind of donation too.
Maybe if you can get some of those plans, just give an idea, I don't know if you guys want to start this year or when we get more money or what, but we need to start thinking about, okay, what's the future for that? After the road department's gone and, there's a big discussion to have over a lot of that.
I think somebody's retiring that could maybe lead a whole group.
No.
What's to do with that?
I like, great, can we make a motion?
Let's make the motion.
I've already been asked to serve on a whole bunch of stuff and it's like, nope. Taking a year off and I'm gonna just go away, so.
Good for you.
So is that the facility in Cambridge, I've never been there, is that a dirt floor facility?
No, it's, they have, it's kind of like the Legion. They have concrete floor and they have a commercial kitchen and they have, uh, another area where they, they've overextended the eaves and they do the, all the 4H livestock outside in bins around it. And they take them inside to show them and it's a pretty nice facility. But I think we're gonna need some kind of an idea to start from and then.
Oh, absolutely.
What the public wants. I could see a survey and all kinds of things just gotta happen there, but the issue's gonna be funds.
Our water financial wants to have a part of that too, facilitate that conversation.
Okay, any questions? Oh.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too.
Um, Mike, Mike Savoy HR sent out a text that he's gonna be too busy this morning to attend, I don't see Jeremy.
Jeremy's just sent an email.
Oh, there we go.
Um, the mics are all up and working, supposedly that ceiling mic is gonna suffice without having any other mics put on the table, so we will check that.
Gonna take a real short break.
Um, yeah, let's take a quick break and then we'll wait for Cindy to come in.
Cindy's not here today.
Is Larry here?
Today, I heard Larry in the basement earlier, so I think Larry will.
So Larry, if you're on, can you come on up, we're ready for you next. So Larry, if you're on, can you come on up? We're ready for you next. Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're still in our department heads. The next one up is Larry.
Just wanna make sure that phone is turned off. Good morning.
Good morning, Larry.
So we're in the middle of spring maintenance, as I said the last couple of weeks. We're finally up to Francie Wallace and getting the spring maintenance done up there. Cabartan ramp is open for the floaters. Bathroom's open. Everything's ready to go. I'm working.
Already, Larry?
Huh?
Was that improvement completed?
No, no, we can't do anything until after July 1st.
You gotta do it during low water too.
Well, yeah, I was just hoping we would. I was really hoping we would, but we have to be into the state's fiscal year, which starts July 1st, to do that.
So is that gonna be a, wow. That can be an issue with people wanting to use it and construction's tearing the world?
We'll be trying to do it during the middle of the week and yeah, it'll be an issue. But it needs to get done and Dave's already gotten comments or calls from some of the fishing guides who want to get that back thing done. I think, okay, gravel can finish that in a real short time, once July 1st comes around.
Shouldn't date but a couple of days to do that.
And we'll probably won't do it that first week of July because it's the 4th. We'll do it the following week.
And you've notified them that it will be closed for construction for a couple of days or something?
Oh, I doubt it. We probably will not close the slide. But we'll let everybody know there's, we'll put signs up and I'll contact the outfitters and let them know.
At least do the outfitters.
Right, right.
I thought you were putting in a new slide.
Huh?
A new slide's being put in.
We're putting one more, we're putting a new slide in and then where the boat ramp is at the back, it had fallen apart and we're putting a completed boat ramp so they can pull their, the guys that are coming down from the south bridge can get their boats back out real easily. As it is now, they're dragging them up the bank, which is not a good thing.
So we're having an additional slide put in?
Yes.
Other one's fine?
Huh?
The one that's there is fine?
Yeah, it's fine. Yeah, we did a lot of work on it last year.
Okay, so we're just adding one?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah, it's, I'm doing, I'm working quite a bit with Big Creek Yellow Pine, the South Fork, East Fork restoration, as I mentioned a minute ago. Pretty much got all 17 members of the old Big Creek Yellow Pine collaborative having nightmares right now because we're right back to where we started.
Where we started.
You gonna be here this afternoon for that meeting?
And Dave is gonna work next week with Kenzie on figuring out exactly where we are on all of our grants and getting all of our documentation. So no matter how long it takes you guys to replace her or where we're going, we will be, we'll hopefully be right on top of our grant process. And then Dave's got an action item for you guys. Any other questions?
No, I think that's great. You guys are watching those grants and monitoring them because we're like, we're short-staffed again, so.
I was gonna wait till next week, but I'm quite concerned because if you put everything together, all the pathways, grants and everything else, over the next few years, we've got close $700,000 to $800,000 worth. And for us to go from just to managing the grants along with the grant, it adds, it's gonna add a lot of work.
More of it.
Well.
Hopefully we'll be able to find somebody, but.
Oh boy, I put the word out to the ISSA and the State ATV Association. Everybody that's got a Facebook page, let's get that on there and try to find somebody quickly.
Question, I'm just thinking that we need a workshop on how to respond to all of these Forest Service events that are coming up. You know, I mean, the MOG has questions, the South Fork now has questions. What do you think about that? Getting you together, Brian together, commissioners together and just having a conversation about as these, these information web or emails come out, how are we gonna respond to them?
So it depends on what phase that project's in. We'll always respond to every single project that comes out in kind of a generic way to get us on the list so that we can have comments down the road.
So who is, we, that's what, we don't really have a county policy around responding to these things.
Well, now it's the commissioners. And keep in mind, most of these projects that have come out are not on Valley County. They're not Valley County projects. They're over on Adams County. So we've kind of, you know, been around that. If you guys want to respond to the Adams County, I'm doing one on Chosshone County next week.
Okay, so my question then is, I mean, there, again, there's not clarity in how we're responding and who has the authority to do so. You're responding as Valley County? You're responding?
No, as a recreation department. I never respond as the Valley County Commissioners.
Well, the recreation department is Valley County, Larry.
That's true.
So we need clarity on who's responding, you know, what our response should be. I think right now it's kind of a big cloud on who's doing what. I think we need something that is a process in place as these things come up so that we know who's responding on behalf of Valley County and what that response is.
Well, we could put a committee together and the only one we have right now to respond on is, is this one, is the South Fork, East Fork project. Then after that, the next one is Granite Slope, which is over in Adams County. And that's probably a year and a half to two years out.
We've got the mature old growth. The conversations were had last week at the western interstate region.
So the old growth, the old growth thing isn't even close yet. We're probably a year to two years out before they put together what the expectations are on it. All they wanted was the inventory upfront. And so the inventory goes back and. And let's face it, if truth being known, if we change who's in charge in Washington DC, that whole thing could change overnight too at this point. But it's probably a year to two years out before we see a recommendation. It's kind of like the Wolverine thing. Everybody's kind of starting to make comments on it, but the truth is, we had people at Washington DC last week, they talked to Fish and Wildlife. Fish and Wildlife hasn't even started doing an analysis on how they want it treated. So that's out another year to a year and a half, maybe two years before we really can make comment on that.
They're placing grizzly bear right now, so. They're placing grizzly bear right now.
Yeah, I'm shocked about that, actually.
So I have responded personally on some of this stuff, but to have a cohesive response, we have to have a process in place. And it can't catch us by surprise that, you know, you got a 30-day window here to respond to something.
Well, what we can, what we can do is when we get ready to do the response, I'll just schedule you guys on a Monday in the afternoon and we'll sit down as a work group and put together comment.
And I think honestly, I feel like this is something that Larry and his group could do. Most of these comments should be really short and sweet.
Absolutely.
Alternative A or alternative B or alternative C and sign it as commissioners and you're done.
I can't tell you how many, talking to the people that read them, if they get, there's two things they don't like is when somebody writes in, this needs to be this way because I like recreation. That is not considered a comment. Or if they get a five-page letter with pretty much nothing into it. So we need to be really concise on that stuff, but that's, I'll just do that.
I would just like to see a process in place. And I would like to see it approved by the commissioners before something goes in so we know what's being said on our behalf.
So what we'll do is I'll schedule for an afternoon meeting after we get something put together so we know exactly.
I'm wondering if this is something that the rec, your rec council could do.
I think they've got their hands full right now.
Much for them.
I wouldn't put them.
They've really got their hands full right now, yeah. Don't want to slow them down.
And I think this is a statement from the board to the Forest Service, to the VOR.
I agree.
You know, I mean, so.
It would be better for the board.
Statement is, and more importantly, that it is with the backing of the Valley County Commissioners. Elected bodies make a big difference upon these statements.
And I just sent you this morning a early recommendation on a response. You might want to read that one.
You know, the biggest thing I see on this is if you don't stay ahead of the curve with these people, they'll run right over you.
Exactly.
And we've got to always stand up. And I know you're on top of all that.
Well, I've actually been, the South Fork, East Fork project, I've been talking to them through the process already because we've got some, there's some questions, there's some legal questions. And that's why I said to you guys earlier, the lawsuits and the recommendations and what has taken place, what hasn't taken place. Because there's things that just have not been completed that are part of that lawsuit that need to be completed. And I think they're going to. It's just, you know.
It's close until they do the work. And it might take 10 years before they do the work. That's the issue.
Yeah.
Well, and I think if we have clarity, Larry, I mean, no matter who is, right now, you're very focused on this because of your outside connections. So when you're not there, if we take Larry off that name tag, how do we do this work?
So it's. El comes back.
So we have to, sustainability-wise, this is a large conversation for our county.
I am 100% on board that, yes.
And so.
And that's the reason you guys are gonna start seeing a lot more come through to you. And that yellow pine, I've got a, I've got a thumb drive that I can't put on our computers. It's actually got so much information and I'm trying to get Jeremy to get you guys copies of that because that needs to be saved. That's all the Big Creek Yellow Pine stuff.
Those are the kind of things that we have to figure out, historically, how we're going to manage this type of process. This is critical for our county. And if we don't have that process in place, if one person leaves, if there's a cog in the wheel somewhere, we lose everything. And I'm just trying to prevent that.
Absolutely. So Dave, you're up. Also, El, don't forget, there is a groomer operator position open.
I know, I've heard that. So Dave, come on up, buddy.
Not for a year.
Awesome.
He knows how to be a tracker.
Yeah, you guys have got a copy of the MOU from Valley County Pathways. This has been a big project that has been whittled down. Our component that we are dealing with, Valley County Pathways on this is now just to put two crosswalks on roads where it crosses. So we're gonna put a crosswalk on West Roseberry, just north of the airport. And then where the pathway pops off the private property and crosses Dawn Drive going into the Donley Boat Ramp.
Can you tell me what a charrow is?
Charrow is like basically a lane or a painting on the pavement.
It's just a crosswalk itself.
Well, no, the charrows are actually gonna be on West Roseberry from 55 going east, or west rather. And it's just the arrows that say like bike lane or.
Gotcha.
Yeah, bikes on the road, shared lane. It's literally a charrow. It's a shared lane arrow.
Wow.
Yeah.
Aren't we gonna grind that road in a year or two?
I don't know what Jeff's plan is on, you're talking about Roseberry?
Yeah, from ITD or from 55 all the way out.
I do remember hearing something about that, so.
I think it was, I'm gonna have to ask you because you just have to do it again.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so that would, I would assume that would fall on the contractor to replace anything that's on the road.
He's planning on it this year. That was on his schedule this year. And he's got the money for it.
Well, we've been talking to Jeff through this whole process and he hasn't mentioned that, so.
All this does is give you guys permission from the county to paint the crosswalk.
Yep, Valley County Pathway is just to paint two crosswalks and they're paying the bill on them, so.
Do you have to have the city of Donley's approval?
They've already worked with the city. They're using part of the city property for the pathway.
Okay, perfect. That's exciting.
So we need a motion then to sign this memory.
Make motion that we sign the memorandum of understanding between Valley County Pathways and Valley County Government at the Donley Town to Beach Flyway Trail?
County, right. I'll second that.
Yeah, motion to second approve the MOU. Valley County Pathways, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have the form?
I do.
So why is it called Beach Flyway? What is that?
It's sort of that Donley, what is it?
Gox.
Gox.
Down on Dawn Drive?
Yeah, there's campground, city park right there. Boat ramp.
That's why they call it that.
Yeah, they're trying to connect basically from the school, but basically right downtown, a pathway that would take people off the roads to get down to that park. Goes into like part of our bigger picture.
Did you guys talk to the sewer district about moving it away from the county out in that north part of that, along the road, but maybe on their property?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Across some of the fire steaks where they sprinkle all the sewage stuff?
Well, that's where the, will be on the, on the actual road.
It'd be on the.
Yeah, so pathways applied for another grant, another grant that would add a detached pathway from intersection out to Dawn Drive.
Oh, nice.
And that's part of the bigger picture planning. It goes all the way out to the Pumpkin Patch area that connects to our existing pathway and then all the way out to Poison, Poison Creek essentially.
So Dave, is there gonna be a detached pathway? It's gonna be attached to the road surface?
Which one?
The one going out to Pumpkin Patch.
Eventually that would be a detached, so.
Detached.
If we can find about $8 million, we can get that pathway built. There's a lot of federal funding coming and that's what's very exciting right now. There's a planning grant that we're hoping to apply for and I was really disappointed to hear that Kenzie was leaving, but there's a planning grant that comes up in June that we can apply for up to $8 million worth of planning. So we were thinking that we were gonna need design and engineering on that and we'd like to get it done so that we can move forward when the funds are available to implement.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Is that part of that new federal?
Not Explorer Act, there's RERC, there's a variety of other things. This, the one that we're specifically looking at for the planning grant is federal highways planning. They have a planning component that's grants that are a minimum of $100,000 worth of planning. And then they have implementation projects that are up to $15 million, but you have to have the planning grant done before you get the implementation grant.
Dave, who are you guys using now for engineering?
We're looking, if you know anybody.
Well, I don't want to put it off on our civil engineer that's supposed to start here pretty quick, but I think eventually down the road, if he can work it in, that would be a perfect job.
Yeah, as I say, this, hopefully if we get this thing done, we would be sending it out because it would be, you know, over the $50,000 minimum, sending it out as a competitive bid to folks. There's a group that we're working with currently, there's another group in town in McCall that is interested in looking at some of those. And then there are a number of other larger national groups that would probably bid as well. So if we had a, you know, $250,000 planning grant, I'm sure we would have plenty.
Need to find a retired engineer that wants to be along the side.
Well, they need to know something about landscape design and recreation planning as well, so.
Yeah, there's specific engineering firms that actually deal with this specific type of.
Absolutely.
Planning, so. So I'm, I'm, what was I just gonna ask? So we already have the grant that we have applied for to plan for the S Bridge. And I know that some of those bridges connect all of that. Would that be a coordinated engineered plan? I think, you know, the one bridge that, I don't know what it's called, but it's got a mesh floor.
The noisy bridge over my creek.
Yeah. I think, is that the one that already has the?
It does. It has cantilevered supports on it, but it was basically built so that it could have a pathway added later.
Okay. But the other bridge that's out there does not. I mean, the S Bridge obviously doesn't, but anything else that's out there?
Well, we've got Tam, Tamrock Falls Bridge, which has the lane adjacent to the bridge. If we were looking at that design work going all the way south across VOR and Forest Service ground, then there's gonna be at least four other, probably three other large bridges that would have to go across some of the drainages down there.
Be great to have one plan for the future. So we always know what we're.
We have, I was gonna say, I've been working with Steve Steubner. There's some money that they're chasing through a private foundation right now that looks very promising. And I think that as we move forward, we're looking at step one of getting this planning grant so that it would be pathways across the valley.
That'd be awesome. Good job.
Yeah. One thing I was gonna clarify too on Cabartan is that July 1st deadline, our 404 permits that we got were very specific. We have a window from the 1st of July through like October 1st, I believe, is when that construction can occur under our Army Corps permits. We're gonna get that done as soon as we can.
Oh, did you need me to sign that?
It does not have a spot here for you two, it tells.
Sounds good. Hey, we all good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. I'm gonna move on. Mara, come on up.
Did he say good luck? I think he thinks we're intimidating. Sheesh.
Lots of questions.
Good morning.
Hey, I like having an office man, just for the record.
I'm plants everywhere.
How do you pronounce your last name?
I love a check. I always say, I love your check. I love a check. I always say, I love your check is how I remember it.
I love a check.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Love being married. Fun last name.
I was, I was, I tried to pronounce it. I said, I'm not going there. I'm gonna ask.
Yep. So May's been super busy for me because it's wildfire awareness month. Um, it was designated by Brad Little as wildfire awareness month. So I've done a lot of different events throughout these first two weeks. Um, we did the wildfire preparedness day down here in Cascade. Um, the turnout was fairly good. We kind of discussed that maybe next year we're going to look for an indoor-outdoor facility. Um, so potentially a legion or potentially try to contact Tamrac and try to make it a little bit bigger. Um, Boise makes a huge day event where they have a ton of booths, bounce houses, free firewise plants. And we did have two booths and some firewise plants and so that outdoor activities, but there's just no room for indoor. And with that time of year, with it being rainy, it's really hard to get, especially families to get out. So that's kind of one of the future goals is to make that something bigger. Um, and potentially do indoor-outdoor event. I also did an open house at my office on last Thursday, uh, May 7th. And that outreach for people was huge. I didn't, I thought I was going to get maybe five people, but I had between 20 and 30 people show up to my office. So it's phenomenal that people are actually coming out, wanting to speak and wanting to learn about the program. Um, I also have 10 home safety evaluations to do this month. So I usually do those on Fridays. So during Monday through Thursday, I kind of do a lot of the IDL grants and firewise grants. And then Fridays I kind of leave open to meet with landowners to do wildfire home evaluations. So I'm pretty booked up the next couple of Fridays doing that. Um, I also had a wildfire seminar at Ponarosa Park on Friday last week. And that was also super positive. Um, I had about 25 people that came out for that one. Um, a lot of the people that lived in Spring Mountain Ranch and Aspen Ridge, those subdivisions came out, which is great because that's where our new IDL grant is falling. So I had a lot of outreach to landowners and a lot of interest to come out and inspect their properties and see if they qualify for our IDL grant.
I was really sorry didn't miss that.
That's okay.
Emergency doctor appointments.
I would like to do something like that again in the future. Um, I would like to do it bigger. So I actually only had eight presenters, but I actually had to turn away five presenters. So there's a lot of people that wanted to present. And then the time of day, it was kind of last minute, so I did it one to five. So it'd be nice to kind of do it more of like an evening or even a weekend. So my goal maybe next year is doing the first weekend of May, a whole wildfire awareness perma- preparedness day. So Saturday being preparedness day where it's booths, um, kind of events for kids. And then Sunday kind of being like a seminar, um, on how we did this year. But mainly doing it in one solid weekend is kind of my goal for next year. So I'm going to start reaching out to Tamrac and other facilities to see if I can potentially get that in the books for coming up future and seeing if they want to donate time or how much that would cost. Um, but I think it would just be great to, because wildfire really does impact everyone. Um, it doesn't matter where you live, even here in the valley, in the grass areas. It impacts all of us. And a lot of people are very interested, um, to see what they can do to make a change in their own property, so.
It's not only fire, it's the smoke.
It is. It's, I mean, we live in the woods, right? So it's just the culture that we live in. Um, we did get approved for East McCall. So that will be presented today by Mackenzie, um, probably in about an hour and a half, two hours. She'll be out here presenting. I'll be in here with her just to kind of watch how it goes. Um, since I will be doing those in the future until a grant or someone is found, the grant writer is found. So I'm also going to tie in with her and kind of see how the financial plan is going, her and Doug, and kind of see what the plan is for that. But I'm assuming I'll probably, um, try to facilitate those within my department, so.
Do you feel good about when Steph walks away into the sunset that you've got this dialed in?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I think it's great. Stephanie's helped me a ton, just her insight on a lot of things. It's great to have that overlap, um, just things that I don't see, right? Um, but I'm a very proactive individual, so, um, things that I might miss that she would do, I'll still accomplish. It just might be done a different way, right? And then I know that she'll always answer my phone call if needed, so.
Or speed dial.
Yep.
Steph feels good about it too. I saw her last Thursday, the open house.
So, and that's what's phenomenal, just having that good working relationship with her. She's truly wanting to mentor me, um, in the future. So I can't see her just dropping me and leaving me for the next couple of years, so. Um, I do have a meeting down in Boise tomorrow. It's the Southwest Idaho All Lands Partnership. And so that is basically a new partnership that's collaborative group that is discussing how to implement and plan new projects within the SIL. And so my GNA money has to be done within SIL boundaries. And so Valley County, most of all of Valley County is in the SIL, but there are certain spots that aren't like, kind of jugmauun and all of that stuff's not in the SIL. And so they actually requested me to be the county representative on this partnership on, on their steering committee. So I would love to do that just because my funding is all based in the SIL. It'll help me plan where my future projects are because I'm going to know where the Forest Service is doing projects, the state, National Forest Foundation. So it helps kind of determine, um, where these projects should be done and accomplished.
Idaho Power.
Idaho Power, yep. And so I had them present. So I met with Idaho Power and then had them present at the Valley County Fire Working Group. And so, um, just these different groups are great for collaborating and knowing where work should be done in a big landscape scale, right? And that's the goal is to create continuous work so that if we do get a massive fire, we're able to stop it somewhere, right? So.
So the SIL, just for the public that might be online, Southern Idaho Landscape, federal money, they've been identified for a specific footprint. When you're talking about the SIL, that is a footprint of federal funding that is coming here for wildfire mitigation.
Yep, and they consider that higher risk. So there's 11 landscapes that they consider higher risk, um, within the US. And they're kind of all over the place, but SIL, the Southwest Idaho Landscape is one of their top ones, um, just where we sit unfortunately and how timbered we are. So they are throwing a lot of money in this area to get more work done. With that, we also are receiving another $80,000, um, within this GNA budget that will be coming soon to be able to do some work, um, project work on the ground.
That's coming from them.
That is coming from them. Yep. P. Sean and Brian Davis found an extra $80,000 that I'll be able to implement. So I'm going to meet with them hopefully this week or next week and kind of determine project areas and high priority areas based off where the Forest Service is working and then what we can see on private land to get some work done.
That's, that's pretty cool.
Yep. Yeah, which is awesome. So, um, Wednesday I have a meeting with YMCA and Trinity Pines. Kind of go out there and see, there has been fuels work that has been done out there in the past, but it's been about 10, 15 years since they've had Stephanie's grant out there. So we're going to go out there and meet with them, meet with the new directors, kind of see what their plan is to go for the future, see if we can implement work in any other areas, because we cannot go back where Stephanie has already had grants. So that's the one thing with these large IDL grants is you cannot re-facilitate work on that ground. You can do adjacent, but they are supposed to upkeep, um, those acres that were already.
Once they've been done, they need to take care of it from then on.
Correct. And that's the same with private landowners as well, so.
All right. Isn't there a pretty big timber sale uphill from YMCA that's supposed to start, I think it's this year?
Yeah, I think it's this year or next year.
Something like that.
Yep. Um, I believe that's state, right?
I think it's state.
Yeah.
They were supposed to do it.
I know this IDL is planning a couple. They have one on Little Dawn or they're going to be doing it in the next couple of years as well. So that is kind of my, that's what, one of the reasons why it's going to be my focus area to try to find another grant down there is to base it off those timber sales to try to get adjacent to those, um, to help the private landowners with risk, right? Cause now they're doing a timber sale, they're putting slash and hazard on the ground. They do mitigate it. They go out and burn and try to reduce it, but there will be more hazard on the ground for the next couple of years. So that's my goal is to try to figure out exactly where they're at and get a grant right next to them, hopefully, right?
So YMCA, they are, the horse thief is trying to redo that with the, at Old Parks and Rec?
That is what I've heard, correct.
So it'd be interesting to see how that all overlaps.
Yep.
So instead of fishing game, Mike, Parks and Rec's going to take it over?
That's the rumor, correct. And they're wanting to facilitate more, so actually paid campsites, stuff like that, which is a good thing, um, because it's actually being managed. And hopefully the fuel loadings and stuff like that will be managed too. I know the IDL has been out there the last couple of years helping reduce some of that hazard with some logging jobs and stuff like that. So, uh, May 30th, I will be meeting with the chief of Forest Service, um, to basically update them on the work that we're doing with the GNA money. Um, some work that I've done with Stephanie in the past. May 30th, he'll be up at Brendan. Yep.
Who's it?
Yep. Yep. So Randy Moore. So I'll be updating him and talking about future projects that we have, um, going here in Valley County. So if you would like that, I can definitely forward it to you.
Why don't you guys ought to go to that?
I'll talk to Patrick Sean and Brian Davis are the ones that asked me to speak, so.
I asked him to come from NICO last year.
Oh, nice.
He said he hadn't been out for a while so that he would try and do that, but I hadn't heard he was coming, so.
Yep, yep. So May 30th.
Something I could fit in. I would love to do that.
They're gonna be up at, I need you to swear to me.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't really know how, what timeframe yet. I just found out last week that they'll be up, or he'll be up there, so.
Still be up there working. I don't know if I ever get off that mountain. Well, both of you should go.
I'll try.
Cause you could really create that relationship with him and build on that and that pays off long term.
Yep.
And then Stephanie did present firewise grants last Monday. Um, so we did have 44 applicants, 13 communities. Um, we did accept 22 of them. So we're funding about 22 of them. Um, we do have some community ones that are bigger scale, which is amazing. So four to five acre common areas that will be conducted and completed. And this is, like Stephanie always says, it is the cheapest work done because it's truly on the landowner and the HOAs to conduct the work. We have a group of inspectors that go out and inspect the job and make sure that it's completely done before they even get reimbursed. So if it's not completed to specs, um, reimbursements will not happen. So, which that hasn't happened in the past since I've been involved at least. Um, most people that are wanting to do work are trying to do really good work. And they take a lot of good advice from us as well.
I love that we have bigger HOAs doing this now.
It's amazing. So when I first, I think last year we only had like four or five, so having 13 this year is phenomenal. So, and it just makes us be able to get more work done on the ground, right? So.
Good news.
Yep. And I'm pretty excited about the East McCall MOU being approved. So that means I'll be able to start facilitating my own grant this year. So I will have a meeting hopefully with Archie and Oki pretty soon because I did send the landowner agreements and contractor agreements over to them. And they had a few tweaks, but not very much. So hopefully they'll have that done soon so I can start getting some work done on the ground.
Ooh.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
It's Arnie. Arnie. There you go.
Sorry.
Don't get that in your brain, because when I get, there's something in my brain, I can't.
Thank you. Thank you for the correction. Any questions?
Um, on the Cascade meeting you had down there, did you have a lot of turnout on that? You said, but I forgot what you said.
The wildfire preparedness day, we had about 20. So the year prior, they had about 100.
Was there any interest in any projects down here?
There was. Um, so I'm meeting with Round Valley Homesteads to go kind of talk to them. And then we do have some down in Smith Ferry. So one of the community grants is down in Smith Ferry.
Did you say another one in Red Fox?
So Red Fox is an individual, they're a husband and wife couple that, and we do have one in Red Fox. That is correct.
I think that's one that everybody's.
That's just one landowner.
Really sell it.
Yes.
In that area.
Yes, it is very thick in that area. Yep, so.
It's really thick.
Mm-hmm. But yes, we do have one in that, one private landowner.
The road where Summer Drive is?
No, no, Red Fox is on the other side of Cabarton North.
Yeah, okay. Like right off Cabarton.
But it's all watchful and it's just a festering mess. Lots of down trees.
Lots of down trees. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Any questions?
Great job.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good week. Scott, come on up. You're next. Billings and grounds.
Good morning.
Morning.
So starting off, we're gonna be helping with elections, uh, getting stuff out on Monday. Get Donley and McCall set up and stuff. Um, I already got times from Gabby. So we're getting that taken care of, up and set up and take down. Um, Neil and I met with Toby last week and looked at the parking situation out the Maritile. I think we have a solution for that. And then we looked, went over there and walked the arena and we're going to get started on that, get power disconnected and stuff so that Toby can get started on that here in the next week or so.
Get power connected?
Disconnected.
Oh, disconnect, okay.
Yeah. The guy comes off the one pole back there, comes out by the announcer's stands. We need to get that disconnected and stuff. So he's got the plans and things. We're going to get those and get started. And he had a recommendation for some additional seating, uh, other than it's extremely expensive, but.
Do we budget for bleachers?
Well, we're gonna take it out of part of that, that ARPA money and stuff, you know.
We budgeted, I thought we.
But yeah, but the trailer with 300 seedings, $94,000. So, um, and I'll kind of look into that a little bit more. Um, I did receive the RFQ for the solid waste for the engineering and stuff work on that up there. Received two of them. I need to talk to Oki about that before I proceed with reviewing those and stuff. If it's something that has to be opened up. There's no bid or anything. It's just for qualifications. So I need to find three of, uh, my constituents here that work with, review three of them and come up with which of the two we want to choose on that. But I want to talk to Oki before I hand them out.
And also the, uh, just so you guys are aware, Toby's going to give us a ballpark bid on parking lot at the Maritile.
Yeah.
And also he'll split off another piece. I think he said he's good about what it costs to blacktop it also. Or maybe you were going to talk to Jeff about that. I don't.
I don't think they'd have time to, to get in there and do that. And some of that to talk to me if it was all prepped and ready, but, um, I don't know with their schedule, if they'd be, you know, be able to get in there and do that. Um, help the warm lake. Idaho Power's going to use transfer site to stock material for work they're doing out there and stuff. So they're going to pick up the key tomorrow and stuff so they can use some of the area out there to lay down, has a lay down yard for materials and things. Um, I'm waiting from a cleaner for a date for the household hazardous waste so we can get that out on the website. We did get the free dump days out there and stuff. And then we started last, I guess they started issuing burn permits last Friday, May 10th. So we're accepting residential household, you know, debris free at this point, you know. Commercial and large lot improvements and stuff aren't covered under that, but it's for, you know, people cleaning up around their yards and not burning stuff. Um, Mackenzie had a whole mood with the, uh, community center grant. They want an energy audit done. So I talked to Dylan about that, so, but he needs some more, uh, specifics. He also talked about disconnecting that power too, so he'll get that taken care of for us down there.
Scott, the power bill last month was just over a grand.
What's that?
The power bill last month at the community center was just over a grand.
Yeah. So I need to know how complete energy they, you know, they wanted to look at, you know, windows and everything else. Are they just looking at power usage? Um, so I need a little clarification for that. And then, um, we need to get the holes filled up there at the top of the hill, the ruts, uh, at the transfer station and things.
I'd drag it bottom too.
Yeah. And, uh, so I'm going to meet with, uh, actually Timber Creek tomorrow. They want to discuss how things went up there, but I don't know if, from talking with Mark, uh, and stuff there, probably not going to use them. they're probably not gonna use them again, I think they have their own in-house guy over in Washington, they'll bring over to take care of it, so, um.
Talking about all the grinding and all that thing?
Stuff, yeah. You saw, you guys saw the bill that came through for Timber Creek this last month, or for Lake Shore, it had the Timber Creek haul to play peak on it, plus they, they got their increases all on it.
Just the fifteen percent.
Yep. And it really, you know, as I was doing that claim, it really, it really ticked me off. They created that mess up there and now they're profiting off of the county for the mess they created by not properly managing it, you know, this, um, I know when we, uh, the, probably when the contract comes up, I won't be here anymore, but I would really look at, I mean, Mark and Terry have been really good to work with here so far, a lot better than the previous manager, but, um, that, I mean, it chaps me bad, we're getting really gouged, I feel, to clamp the mess they created, and, um, I don't know, down, you know, when it comes up, is put at our request out there for possibly another contractor to take it over, you know?
Me, independent contractor, take over that whole?
Well, there's other people, you know, um, just gotta be careful, cause Waste Connection owns a lot of different ones under different names, but, um, we'll see how it goes this next year and stuff with, with Mark and Terry, but this, this situation with how it was handled up there and stuff, and, um, really bothers me.
You know, let's go back to burning it too.
We can, but, you know, we've already kinda made a decision not to go down that path anymore, so.
Well, I think we need to rethink that, cause I've already talked to the folks at DEQ and Mike Reno, et cetera, and he said there's not an issue with burning it.
Yeah, it just makes a mess up there though, it's just, you end up with this big pile of ash and, and then you're driving through it and trying to push it out and stack on top of it, it's, uh, burning, you don't get a complete burn, it's just, uh, some of the stuff we're hauling off is incomplete burned and junk and, um, um, I think grinding is a, is a cleaner, better way to maintain that deck up there.
It's expensive.
Yeah, it is.
And you keep the, I mean, all that they grinded on, not the C and D, but of the other, you keep that on site, or does that have to be trucked?
Well, if, there's a market for it, it gets trucked off, and that's what it does, it, you know, Timber Creek did take it down to their yard in Nampa, which was there two weeks ago, and they got a, had to have a facility there, they're just, uh, in north of the sugar beet factory plant right there, uh, they've, they've got quite a deal, and so long as it's kept clean enough, it's something to be hauled off and is marketable product, and if we can keep the C and D cleaned up, you know, um, we just have to find someone that, you know, would, you know, that's interested in it.
Right.
And stuff.
Scott, a couple of things, I, we paid for some tires, they, did they get all the tires gone?
Yeah, when I was up there, uh, a week ago or two, so I was up there, I mean, the bins are all empty up there.
Good news.
Um, they're all lined up neatly and up, um, maybe, only I noticed they're kinda close together, was hard for people, you know, to throw tires in them, you know, get in between them, but, and that's the thing, uh, I don't, it's hard for people to throw tires over the side of those things.
They used to have doors on the end that they opened up.
Yeah, but the way they put them in there with the hub trucks, the doors are facing, you know.
Back, or the other side, huh?
Side, and there's not enough room to put them in there where they can get around with their hub truck.
Can't expect people to throw a tire over one of those.
And stuff, so I think, I don't know what they do, is they put them out, they stack them out in front, I think they're either putting them in the loader, putting them in there or something, but, um, i- it, it is difficult for, you know, someone to throw a tire up and over into the, into the roll off.
I didn't think that the other day, I saw only two on the end had tires in them, but, and, but you're right, they're all stacked, boom, 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 boom.
Yeah, you know, and they're, and they were, I mean, usually they've been up there and they're overflowing and there's tires stacked everywhere, but it's cleaned up nice up there.
Well, yeah, it looks pretty, pretty decent.
Yeah, and then, uh, Culters came up and did a few, you know, uh, removed all the freon and stuff from the, uh, everything with refrigerant and stuff in it and things, but, um. Yeah, I mean, uh, it's looking good, they're nice if we could figure out a lay down yard to grind the concrete up, we get, and asphalt and stuff, cause Timber Creek can grind that stuff, they just have to separate it into concrete that has no rebar and with rebar, and stuff with rebar, they go in with a machine and cover it up first and then grind it, um, but it's, um, I mean, I looked at, they got piles of ground up concrete out there, they're selling, you know, as road mixers, bait and stuff, and, um, instead
You can't use that stuff on the site itself to build up the road?
It'd be nice to, you know.
That's what I would.
Cause it does get so muddy up there, you know, in the spring and the fall, trying to get to the, the metal pile and the C and D pile and, and stuff, but, um.
They could just, so they just pulverize that stuff then, don't they?
Exactly, like a big, like a big tub grinder's, what, looks like they have sitting there, uh, that they're dumping it into and things, and, um, they can grind the asphalt too, I mean, um, um, ground asphalt and everything else.
So if we were to put it up there, do we have to pay them for the product?
Pay who for the product?
Like shore, or, I mean, when you're saying they're taking it off, they're putting it somewhere else, I mean, is that, the ones that's dumped up there, it's their product, so if they're grinding it and we wanted to use it?
Well, our contract says if, once it's put into a vehicle of theirs, so if it's just dumped on the ground and ground up.
It's ours still.
It's still our, our product, you know, it's kinda like the, the Woody debris that Timber Creek hauled off, you know, it was never put, it never really became the possession of, of Lake Shore, cause it was, um, cause it says once it's put into their vehicle, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Going on that, on that wood grinding, construction grinding, I think something we gotta think about or concentrate on is to have it done every year.
Yeah.
Uh, actually like.
Go every other year.
Try to do twice a year, yeah, especially with the Woody debris pile gets so huge, um, it would be nice if something we could do twice a year, you know, um, cause we got really lucky, the Timber Creek showed up, they did, cause if they hadn't showed up that week, we probably had stopped taking it, cause, uh, I don't know if the lot clearing and growth is gonna continue the way it is up here, um, but, you know, it was just large loads of commercial trees, logs, you know. When you guys talk about redoing that contract in a year or two, whenever it comes up, I think that's one of the things that you could pull out of the contract, is that grinding, and just the county and Timber Creek are involved and Lake Shore's not in it.
Yeah.
And that's the way to, to get that fifty percent nick every time off, because.
Yeah, or they, you know, if they do it in-house, just have to see what kinda cost they'll come up with, if it's competitive or more, cause that was what they say, if they take Timber Creek out, then, then we don't have the fifteen percent, so we have to see what their cost is, that they gotta truck a grinder and equipment over from Washington to here and grind it. He's supposed to have, the gentleman's supposed to be over here sometime here soon to look at it, and then, um, Mark said he'd have some numbers, what, you know, we can, um, thought we could budget for and stuff.
So I got a question, Mara, all this G and A stuff that homeowners are cleaning up, they're placing everything, is all that cleanup going up to the transfer site?
Technically, the Firewise Grants, yeah.
All that doesn't get burnt, it gets, goes up to the hill?
That's the, that's the purpose of it, is try not to have flash hazard out in the property.
Bring it, don't burn it.
Bring it, don't burn it, so that, that's gonna start May twenty-fifth through June sixth at the fire stations, um, the purpose is, is so that we don't have burning slash residential waste and creating wildfires, cause that does happen a lot, um, just uneducated.
Cause the stuff goes to the fire station, like Mecca hauls that, that goes out to Lake Shore, or to Lake Fork, yeah, and like I say, we ground that, I mean, they ground that in a day, was clean stuff and didn't have to sort, you know, metal and garbage out of it, um, they went through that in about a day, and that was usable product for them, cause it was cleaner and stuff too.
Yeah, cause it has to be hand loaded stuff, that's the difference in going to the dump, is people can put stuff on a trailer and kinda push it out, kick it out, right, and so you can get a lot more dirt, the dump, up at the dump, where the Woody debris bins that Stephanie has started and the bring it, don't burn it, that has to all be hand loaded, so you don't get as much dirt and stumps and bigger material like.
Right, right.
That is a bonus of that, um, program. But if you guys do want to burn it in the future, um, it did actually get brought up at the fire working group this last, this last meeting, um, and Juan, Donley Fire and SIPA brought up that they would help facilitate them again, whenever, or whatever, even if you wanna do smaller piles or half of it or whatever.
We appreciate that, Tom, thanks, I think it's, you know, it just depends on how much you wanna spend on it, but to me, three hundred thousand to chip it versus burning it for very little and nothing, saving the taxpayer dollars, and that's our goal.
That was two years worth, we did have a grant to do it, and that was one of the purposes behind it, so.
We didn't have the grant, I don't know if we'd have done it, but.
Yeah.
Okay, what else you got?
That's about it for right now, just any other questions for me?
So Scott, I was up at the Lake Fork building for Mara's open house, and I noticed we're gonna have to put painting, that building also on your project calendar, so that has, I don't know how long that building's even been there, but it's never been.
I tell you, the metal siding they're selling now is not as good as the old siding they used to sell.
I'm talking about the inside of it, the inside of the building.
Interior?
Yeah, the interior's really dirty.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Easy smoke.
It does need to be painted, so we need to put that on the project somewhere.
You can pick the color, Mara.
Oh, there's gotta be a county color.
County color.
County color.
Sound like McCollister color scheme.
But the more we use that building, and then, I don't know if you've done your budget process, but I'd really like to think about trying to find something to set up that back conference room to actually make it look like a conference room. I mean, they've, they've cleaned it up a bit, but it looks like maybe new tables, I'm not certain, but.
What's that?
The, I don't know if there's new tables in there or not, but, I mean, they're using that now for full facility, and it needs to be a little more professional in that back area, so.
So as far as what do you think?
We need some chairs, we need a nicer table.
Yeah, we need more chairs, for sure.
You know, I purchased, you know, the, the chairs and furniture, or I, I acquire them, the departments pay for their furniture, I just acquire them for them, so it's something they'd have to budget for, cause I paid for a whole bunch of desks that I shouldn't have this last year and a half, so, um, I didn't know at the time, but the departments are supposed to pay for them, I just get them delivered and set up, so, so it took a big chunk out of my budget this year.
So we'll remember that for your budget share.
And stuff, so, but yeah, I mean, if they got the money budgeted, we'd more than glad to get the stuff for the, you know, for them. Um, as far as like desks, um, you know, we're kinda set on one, that we're trying to keep everything the same, but they're fifteen hundred bucks a pop, and, um.
Hopefully we won't have to replace them.
Yeah.
And the tables in there, we're, you know, for the groomer meeting and everything that we've been doing, works great, they're just short on chairs though.
Okay.
I'll make sure Larry has.
Another six, eight chairs.
You want Dave if you'd like him.
Would you, would you work with? Perfect.
Yeah.
Have you heard any more about this counter? Where are we at, Neil, or you heard?
I don't know what's going on with this.
On this counter? Getting this replaced? Haven't heard, I was kinda curious, I had, I was gonna see Mackenzie here a little while about the, uh, grant for the fair board, I was gonna ask her about, does she know anything about this? So her husband, it's the one that's doing it.
Okay. Okay, so you're gonna replace it?
Yeah, they're just gonna just kinda keep this, but reshape a top. That's convex or concave, I don't know which way it goes.
Okay. Okay. I think that's about it then.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, uh, have a great day.
Did you guys catch that he said I'm gonna be gone when all this other stuff comes up? He's got some end dates too.
So we're gonna move on down to the Jennet Road Bridge, Jeff, come on up. Good morning.
Morning.
What do you wanna do first?
He says it's like my dog, my dog will lay down, take one deep breath.
Come back from vacation and Mickey's got this whole pile for me to deal with.
That's good, Mickey, good job.
Since Chris is sitting in here, let's, let's go ahead and open the bids first.
Okay. In my mouth.
Just to let you guys know, Jeremy's been listening and all the audio is working, so those ceiling mics, he can even hear Mara in the back of the room, so, good news.
Really?
Our audio's.
So we're gonna go to an action item, these are bid openings for five different projects, I guess. Which one do you wanna do first? Gold Dust?
Uh, let's do the paving ones first.
Okay, we have two of those.
Gold Dust and Davis Creek.
Where's Davis Creek at again?
Davis Creek goes, it's where, uh, Ken Roberts has his big white barn that goes out to Gold Fork Hot Springs.
How far is that gonna get paid back?
Well, we're only gonna pave from Coscale Lane, which is about three hundred feet off the highway, cause that's all new from when Ken did that major intersection there, out to where the pit entrance is to Will Munster's. That's the only, it's just, it's beat to a pulp and we're putting way too much money into patch, we can't keep it together. Same with Gold Dust, it's just.
Well, that's a crabs?
No, that'll just be a, they'll pulverize the asphalt, leave it in place, lay it back out and then pave on top of it.
Two inch or three inch or?
Three inches.
Three inch, bring them on up.
You have two bidders on each one.
Okay, so you guys get your pins out.
We got valley paving on top and granite.
This is both for, you wanna do Davis first, you said?
Uh, whichever one you wanna do.
Let's do Davis Creek first.
Gold Dust, you wanna pave in front of your shop, I don't see what you're doing.
That road's falling apart, we can't keep it together, I mean, all, all the way to subdivision, it's just.
Davis first bid is from valley paving and asphalt. And the total bid to, for mobilization, three inch overlay, pulverized old asphalt and shoulder of the road is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-five cents, three five seven two six five six five.
That one's Davis.
This is valley paving for Davis, yes. And the next one for Davis, if I can get to it, is for granite excavation. Okay, and this same bid, mobilization, three inch overlay, pulverized, shoulders of the road, this bid is for four hundred and ninety-one thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents, oh one nine zero five nine point eight.
Just on the twenty-two foot length or width, that's.
What's that?
That's all you need on those rows, is the twenty-two foot width?
Is that, I, I forgot what I put on there, I thought it was twenty-four?
It says twenty-two foot wide.
Oh, that's twenty-two, okay.
Both of them. Okay, we have two bids, what's your pleasure?
I wanna make a motion that we, uh, accept valley paving and asphalt for three fifty-seven.
Two sixty-five, sixty-five.
Yep.
We got a motion to second approve the, the Davis Creek Lane paving project to valley paving and asphalt, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-five cents, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And Jeff, there's no concerns, cause, and I apologize, I don't know if this is valley in the room or not, but when West, the Lake Fork Road got done, it was paved and the shoulders were actually paved, so we had issues, you're gonna make sure that this is twenty-two feet wide and the shoulders are done correctly, okay? So it's fifty-three hundred feet, it's about a mile back, where's that entrance? I'm trying to think where there's a pit back there.
Um, you can't hardly see it unless you really look for it, cause they've, they went down with it, it's basically a sand.
It on the north side?
North side of the road, about a quarter mile off that road, it used to be Will Munster's pit, I don't know if he still owns it or not, but. It used to be Will Munster's pit, I don't know if he still owns it or not, but.
There was a, gravel trucks that are coming out of there that are beating that road?
Not helping it any.
So with this, with this type of infrastructure, will that hold for what would be the expectation for that road? So, is it gonna be twenty years?
With leaving, with leaving the existing asphalt there, I'd basically almost give it a six inches of asphalt.
Okay.
You're not going from the highway back, you're just starting?
Starting at Coscale, which is the first north-south
Yep.
lane path off the highway, from there out to the pit entrance.
Pit entrance.
From there out, the pavement seems to be holding up just fine, so.
Okay, the next bid is for, uh, Gold Dust Road. The first one is from Granite Excavation. Um, this is for mobilization, three inch overlay, overisole asphalt, shoulder road with existing material. Total bid is seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Seven ninety-one, zero four four point four eight. That was from Granite. And same road, different company, Valley Paving and Asphalt. Same deal, mobilization, three inch overlay, pulverized and shoulder, this bid came in at five hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixteen. So there's one bit of difference.
So Jeff, this is going to Miners Court. Does that go all the way back into the subdivision, or is it, it's where the subdivision takes, the road takes off to the right to go back in?
Yeah, if you go in and make the verd ninety on the pavement, cross Big Creek Bridge, and then you, Miners Court's the first intersection.
Okay.
Cause right now, the pavement stops between the bridge and Miners Court. So it's always gets real bad between the end of the pavement and that intersection, cause they're still climbing right there. I just wanna take it right to that intersection.
Do you have to use special asphalt on the top of that bridge? Oh.
We'll, we'll have to look at it with the, with the winning bidder, a lot of the times, we won't pulverize over a bridge cause it causes too much shaking and bouncing. They might pulverize to it, stop, go to the other side, start pulverizing again, and then match the pavement. Cause we can't, with bridges, if you don't take the old asphalt off and put new asphalt on, that weight of the new asphalt adds to their, your weight limits on that bridge.
Sure.
So we, by look, yeah, we'll have to go out and look at it with the contractor whenever.
Or in Wagon Hand, that, up by Little Lake up there, though, or?
Dead Horse.
It was.
Dead Horse, yeah.
They have two bumps in the road.
Yeah, it was a mess.
I'm mad at myself every time I drive over it.
Okay, what's your pleasure here?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, Valley Paving and Asphalt bid for two seventy-six, two sixteen.
Five seventy.
Five seventy-six, I'm sorry.
Oh, I liked the first one, you just, go with the first one.
May not get it done.
And a motion in a second to approve the bid from Valley Paving and Asphalt, for Gold Dust Road, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, what's next?
Oh, let's go to Seal Coat. Seal, Seal Coat. One bid.
This is for the roads we paved the last year?
Uh, the last three or four years.
You're doing a bunch of them.
Not a bunch, but the ones that really needed it bad.
Do you have an actual list of those projects that you're gonna do? I noticed on this, it just kinda said random, so didn't really give us a.
I think there's only five roads. And we gotta figure out when the new engineer starts on, we gotta get back into our own chip sealing, cause it's ungodly expensive.
Okay, this is for the chip seal project, seal coat projects, this is from Specialty Applicators LLC. Says they're based out of Saint George, Utah. And the total cost for mobilization, chip seal and seal coat friction, fog seal if chip seal applied. So the total bid for this is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Four two five nine one zero.
That fall within your budget that you had projected?
Well, we started out with a million dollars, and then you guys kind of dropped it to five hundred thousand to save some money.
Yeah.
So that was right there.
If I was looking for the list of the roads.
I've got the list, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll get it up to you.
Okay, I saw it somewhere, but.
Probably, it might be attached to this bid.
So this is basically the approver deny, and start over, whatever you wanna do here.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the bid for Specialty Application, Applicators LLC for four hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten.
A second? Who did second it to approve this bid for Specialty Applicators for four hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars? Seal coat project, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So Jeff, now that we've spent all of your money, we had conversations this morning with the sheriff, and he is being asked to close sections of West Mountain Road because of the condition of that road.
It's bad.
So what is your plan, and what financing do we have behind it?
I'm gonna go work on about the six of the worst spots this summer. About all I can do, the money we got.
So what, what does that mean? I mean, what, you're gonna go work on it?
Google fix them.
Are you rebuilding them? Are you just scraping it? What are you doing?
No, we will, we will put fabric down, bring it up with rock, with some crush on it. So it's gonna be just like we did on the other sections over there.
Same thing with Thunder City.
We can't start at one side and go, because we've got a mile section in the middle that's really good, nothing needs to be done, there's three hundred feet here, there's nine hundred feet here, there's a hundred foot there.
Okay, so you've identified those areas, and so we could put out the word that there is gonna be work done this year on six different sections.
They're just a low, kinda boggy areas there?
No, it's just.
It's randomly turned over?
Random spots over there.
Wow.
I mean, they're just, we got one, I can't say the name of what we're calling the hill out there, but it's, uh.
The hill was mentioned, so therefore.
Looks like.
A crappy situation?
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's very, very gooey, it's clay.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I, I don't know if Kevin called, told you what everybody's calling it, but, yeah, it's all you can do to get through it in four-wheel drive.
Being down the.
Now it's hardening up, we've been over there blading three, if not four, times this spring already, just trying to keep it drivable. I think it's starting to harden up to where it's getting okay, but there's just, it's gonna take a lot of money to fix that whole thing.
Wow.
We got six miles in the middle still we need to totally rebuild.
So I know we just, we're losing our grant writer, but is there any kind of funding that we could look at to do some of that work? We should probably be writing anything we can in order to try and.
There's, I'm sure there's something out there, um, and when this new engineer gets here in a couple of weeks, it's on his task list to, gonna start working on that.
Well, we used to use three nineteen money for a lot of that.
Well, three nineteen only covers a small amount, the county covered the other roadwork.
Yeah.
Need to start having some plans for some of these projects that are, uh, my concern is that the Forest Service is looking at that permit over there in Tamrac. We already have a problem with that road, and we need to identify a path forward before the comment periods are done. I mean, they're doing all their testing this year, but next year, that comment period's gonna be open. And we have road issues, we need to make sure that we're talking about that before that permits issue.
A lot of it, like.
I love what Tamrac's doing to the community and all of the economic vitality it brings, but we need to address the infrastructure needs, too.
Well, that, and that's, we've always talked about another north-south corridor.
Yes.
If something happens out here on the highway, I wouldn't drag my camper up that road, that's all I can tell you.
The other thing that we need to look at as far as funding is the health and safety issue over there. Because right now, the sheriff is telling us that you couldn't get emergency vehicles in there. So there should be specialty funding in order to fix roads, if there's emergency vehicle access that's not being.
Have we got a add-out for a new grant writer?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's coming, quick as possible.
No hits on it yet.
No.
It's gonna be a hard one to fill.
Yep.
So let's move on down to South Fork Bridge. Is this the bridge that the mountains are coming together?
No, this, this is the twenty-nineteen FEMA repair, repair.
Oh, that, that stretch road. Gotcha. Okay, this is the east fork of the south fork.
So this, FEMA's paying for this also, and it'll be an addendum on the original claim in twenty-nineteen.
Okay.
This is to move the road back a foot or two from the creek.
Uh, yeah, we gotta move about sixteen rocks.
You don't wanna do this yourself, Jeff, I take it?
We don't have time. We got way too many problems out here.
This is the same FEMA, didn't pay us seven hundred thousand for four years?
Yep.
Yeah, so they're gonna pay for that, exactly, do you have money to front this, and?
Okay, this bid is from OK Gravel Works. And the total bid, mobilization, riprap repairs, Edwardsburg Road Profile Creek Road Mitigation. Total bid for this project is a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. One one five five zero zero.
So is it more than just the bridge, Jeff? It sounded like it was.
No, you're getting them mixed up, this, this has nothing to do with the bridge. This is the avalanche repair that we just got funded by FEMA a couple of weeks ago. So, the South Fork Bridge is one back past Warren.
You keep that?
Well, let me make sure then that we have, so what we were looking at, what we thought we were looking at first was the South Fork Bridge. So is this the one that came in at, you have riprap repair?
Remember, the FEMA fund said we've got the road a little too far out into the river, and we rebuilt it, so this is to pull the road back.
It's not encroaching in the river anymore, they changed that, it's, we widened the road prism. And it's an RCA, which is a riparian area, and they want everything sucked back where um, yeah.
It's just one bid.
This is what kept us from getting our big check for four years.
Yeah.
They want us to move it back away, just a little ways from the creek. I think for a hundred and fifteen thousand, that's.
Well, that's, that's not all of that, so, repair number four, I admitted to encroaching in the river, which we did. The Forest Service's help, the fisheries, they said, how about if we leave this one alone, cause it's actually helping that corner? Let's move, instead of moving that rock pile and disturbing that old trout pool right there, let's move mitigation up Profile Creek Road, but gravel down and a couple new culverts in.
Whatever.
Well, that's an old new deal, isn't it?
If it works, it works. Tell me you want that in writing?
That stopped us for four years, and now they're saying, never mind, we go fix it somewhere else.
So, El, is this, this the only bid on this one?
Yeah, this is the only bid.
I'll make a motion that we accept the OK Gravel bid for a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
For the repair of the East Fork Rip Rap Repair.
Rip Rap.
No, this is the South Fork Bridge repair.
No.
Now I'm confused. Now I'm confused.
It says right on it, East Fork, South Fork Road, or Stubnike.
East Fork Rip Rap Repair, okay, so we didn't do anything on the South Fork Road yet.
Not on the bridge.
We didn't even get a bid on it. I don't know what I'm gonna do.
That's what we're gonna have to do?
I don't know, Forest Service is worried about it because ITD load rated it to four tons. They can't even get a.
Oh, jeez.
One of their small fire agents.
Four tons is.
Mara used to work off of at SIPA.
My pickup weighs four tons.
Let's finish this one, so we can.
Yeah.
I need to quiet in my brain.
So we're doing the East Fork Rip Rap Repair for a hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred. We got a motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
So now the South Fork Bridge is the one that's moving, that we have monitors on?
We will have monitoring on it.
Okay.
That's gonna be an independent company that's gonna do that.
Yes.
Okay.
So you have to load rate that bridge, and so, because it's in the middle of nowhere, where's the signage go? Somebody doesn't get to a bridge, and then they can't go.
The signage will go, well, that's, I, I gotta talk to ITD about it and see how they wanna, the actual weight limit signs will be right before the bridge, or, you know, half mile before the bridge. And a turnaround, so they can turn around and go out, but I think we need something at Big Creek, and we need something at Warren.
Absolutely.
Saying so many miles ahead, load rated bridge.
If I drove that far and I couldn't get across, I'd be ticked.
I'd just go across it anyways.
All that. Yeah, you're, you're on, you're on camera, dude.
And you said you didn't get any bids on this at all, so, you wanna just delay this one and try again, or what do you wanna do?
I don't know, I need to talk to ITD and see what they wanna do.
Okay, so then Doug, we're gonna postpone the South Fork Bridge Repair bids. For further information.
When you're talking to them, I mean, because it is, I mean, basically, it's for fire back there, correct?
It's the only thing heavy coming out of there, and then people that are loaded down with two or three cords of firewood on trailers and stuff.
Okay.
Um, other than that.
Firewood, I'm not worried about, but if you gotta get a fire engine back there for fire, I mean, they need to tell us what, what can happen, or what we can do as an alternative, until we can find somebody to go fix it.
Is that be able to steel plate it for the time being, across that rotted timber? I don't know. And the only reason I put this out to bid, engineering costs, engineering estimate was gonna be around thirty thousand. That doesn't hit our fifty thousand threshold, but I wanted to put it out there just in case, so I might be able to find somebody that can do it without the bid process under fifty thousand.
Engineer it?
No, it's already engineered, the repair's already been engineered. Burgess and Nyepel have done all that for us, how to fix it, this and that, and, but I've had a couple of contractors say, you know, I'm
Time to go back that far.
We're not real busy, and that's the problem, getting somebody to go back there for two weeks. I have a couple contractors that like to do little stuff like that, so I'll talk to them and see if I can get a price from them.
Okay, let's move on, sign work order number one for the South Fork River Bridge structural health monitoring.
Okay, so this is the, those monitors that Sherry was just mentioning.
This is just changed basically the company that's doing it, correct?
What's that?
This just changes the company that's doing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Burgess and Nyepel did the um, engineering on it, and the engineer that worked at Burgess and Nyepel did all this. Engineering firms, and now he worked for this Arturus or whatever.
So we don't have, this is not an action matter, we've already approved this, it's just, it's a different.
It's a different company.
Different company, same guy. So we don't need a motion?
Uh.
Yeah, it was on there.
We're on the safe side.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contracts to change the entity that will be doing the bridge monitoring to.
Ardura.
Ardura, A-R-D-U-R-R-A Group, Inc.
Is this the one I'm looking at here that has a thirty thousand dollar limit on?
I think so, must be, I don't have it sitting in front of me, it's looking at it.
Yeah, thirty thousand's the amount.
Yep.
Okay, so we got a motion, do I get a second?
Yeah, second.
Who did second it to approve the new contract with Ardura for the South Fork River Bridge, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and we all three sign this, and Doug attests, I'll put the sign page up.
Jeff, they're gonna do nothing but just monitor the movement that's going on up there that nobody understands.
The four GPS units that they have, that will work back there are about twenty-five thousand dollars. But they will buy them back from us at a discounted rate, of course, after a year. They wanna let them sit back there through four, all four seasons. Like I said earlier, we don't know if that mountain's moving, that mountain's moving, or if we got a footing that's moving that's not showing. Something's, just throw it in my pile right there, Sherry.
Okay.
How long has it been since you've been noticing that moving?
Couple of years, but last year was really bad.
Last year moved.
That's when it actually pushed that steel plate up.
Yep.
There's a six inch or a six inch expansion joint in there.
Oh yeah.
Between the approach and the bridge. It's been slowly closing, but last year it slammed shut and pushed that chunk of steel up.
My goodness.
The rockers, the rockers that the bridge sits on are kicked at 15 degrees back towards the river. So they're not sitting straight up and down. They're sitting like this, which isn't hurting anything. But that still doesn't tell us who's, what's moving.
What's moving, yeah.
If they can put those GPS units up with their sensors and stuff, they'll, should be able to tell what's moving and once again, what do we do?
Yeah. It's gonna take some work.
I mean, that's, that's a 235 foot bridge with no piers in it.
Spanning that far?
Built in 1959. And there's nothing wrong with that bridge except for that rotted timber cap.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Okay, let's, uh, can we do the one for Steve real quick?
Non-funded, this is for weed control from McCall Airport.
Yep.
And my question for you, Jeff, is why is there no funds?
It's part of that, from what I understand, talking to Steve, it's part of that cooperative, that's right, cooperative, noxious weeds, so we help City McCall, City McCall helps us. We help Boise County, Boise County comes up, helps us. Part of that CWMA stuff.
This is where the outcome, it's been the whole day, different counties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. So I'll make the motion then that we sign the non-funded participating agreement between Valley County and the City McCall USDA Forest Service for weed control at Boise Airport, or McCall Airport.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And I think the last one on your list is the lease purchase. And, uh, tell us what that's for.
A 310 excavator mini. It's gonna have a brush head on it, so we'll actually have two brush cutters. So we can hopefully get started cutting our own brush.
Is that the excavator out there?
No, that's our 318. The wheeled excavator down there, that's a 318 we bought.
This was approved through the CIP?
Yes.
This is a smaller version of that, but it's a tracked.
It's tracked excavator.
Rubber tracks or steel?
Um, steel with rubber inserts.
Okay.
So Larry wanted to use this too, correct?
I ain't loaning it to anybody. They can pay me to rent it. I ain't loaning it to anybody.
That's what I was asking. They're gonna be paying a portion of it. I think they're gonna try and.
That's up to you guys on how much, how much stuff I share, but we haven't even gotten the 318 out yet because we'd been so busy working on trying to keep these roads somewhat passable.
And remind me again, Jeff, how much was it a year?
This is $48,619.79 per year for five years.
So, everything's expensive.
Right there, $48,000, five years.
Okay, so I need a motion to do this one.
You did put this through CIP too, so the CIP.
Yeah, this is good through CIP last year.
So this is a 310 excavator.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the three, did you just say 318?
310. 310 excavator.
310.
Okay.
Ten ton brush.
With the brush head.
This is the exact, oh, you were calling out the other one. Uh, I would move that we approve the contract lease for the CAT 310 excavator. For $48,619.79 per year for five years.
Again, got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
So this, both those excavators have, I ordered ditching buckets with them. Bucket, plus a digging bucket. So these, both these are multipurpose. Hopefully, you know, if we have another winter like we did this year, we can roll them out, half the winter brush it.
Good.
Great.
The last one right there is for Dr. Sein.
Are those the kind of buckets that you can clean ditches if you need to be?
Yeah, that's why it's called a ditching bucket.
It's a big old.
Being a little snarky today.
Kinda full of it, isn't he?
He's, he's gonna really like Dan coming to these meetings and staying. Hey, um, so a question came up this morning. We need a new parking lot down there at Amerititle. If that pad was all ready for you to pave, could, could you find time to pave it? We don't, I think it could be done this fall. I don't think it'd have to be done right away, but.
I.
So maybe keep that in back.
I got a good paving crew, but we're not used to paving around light posts and sidewalks and.
Okay.
We set our screen down and we go straight.
We'd be better off just getting it out the bed.
You'd probably get a better product.
Okay.
And there's nothing wrong with my paving crew, but we're not used to
Doing parking lot.
Hand shoveling these corners in and, you know.
Yeah, so, so if you understand, Sherry, when you drop down the hill, it go down the hill, hooking them apart. Halfway down the hill, you see a break. Pavement's broken. He's gonna tear out all that, all the way down to the bottom. And make it all fade away from the building, the water, so it doesn't pile up right there at the back door. So he's gonna grade that whole thing out of there.
Who is?
Toby.
Oh, Toby Olson gonna do it?
Yeah.
Whoever is, uh, responds to the RFP will be doing that.
We're gonna keep it under the 50.
Yeah, they got that sunken.
I hope you can, but that's.
Drainage. Thing on the backside where everything's. Your grate's still there for the water drainage, but the parking lot sunk inches all the way around it.
He said that, he said on that thing, he said all I gotta do is just raise that piece up.
So everything drains into it. Toby knows what he's doing.
So he's got it dialed in. Me and Scott and Mitch and Toby all met out there last week. Toby had a pretty good feel for it. He's gonna get us some numbers, something he thought he'd take. Not for the blacktop, but.
Yeah.
Love to get bids for blacktop.
Think I got them all, Jeff, but Mickey might wanna check.
Doug, get his.
Oh, nope, 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 nope.
Very last one, Doug. That one basically says that this was approved through the commissioners.
Shit, I don't know where you signed. There's a lot there.
Doug, who are these people that were back there?
That was Chris Subert from Valley Paving.
Okay.
That's not where you're supposed to sign.
Subert Excavating and Valley Paving. Part of the old Subert family from around here in Ontario, cottonwood. They're actually based out of cottonwood.
Yep.
You own that concrete plant up there still?
No, Clearwater owns that. I'm not sure who owns that now that after Ed passed away.
I know Knight Freiber was trying.
I know Tim Howes is running it, but I don't know who owns it. It's still called Clearwater.
My Freiber trucks run out of there all the time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no clue either.
Out of time?
You got five more?
No, you got some time.
Five minutes? Okay, uh, so I've hired Granite and OK Gravel Works. So, the engineers told me I have to X out 6,000 tons of material where the new shop's gonna sit. So Granite and OK Gravel Works has been hauling me Lake Fork material. I got a heck of a mountain of material sitting down here.
Just to refill it after you take it all out of there?
It's more compactable, more stable material. That out there's basically all sand. When the dredge went through, if it would have been natural ground that had never, ever been disturbed, it probably would have worked and we might have only had to go four feet down or three feet down for the footings. But there's nothing in this till you get dang near down to the clay layer.
They dredged that whole area?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so we're working on that. We should hopefully be almost done by the end of this week. We have to go out two or three times a day and push, push their piles up.
So where is that material going? Are you taking out?
Well, we'll mix it in with some of our other material and put it on our roads. And we can use some of it in the top, like the last foot of fill, I think, underneath the building and we can put it out for drainage stuff, but, uh, like the stuff, the material we put on Thunder City last year is on the dirty side and it gets kinda messy in the spring. We'll haul some of this out there and kinda mix in with it and it's, it'll, it'll work fine on a road. Um, it's definitely not going to waste.
But you're saying either Josh or Wade is doing that work?
No, Josh and Wade are hauling me the material from Lake Fork.
Oh, back down to fill the hole?
Yeah. Wade, Wade, I haven't even dug the hole yet, so the lands group out of McCall, they're supposed to be coming down. I wasn't here last week to sign a piece of paper for them. They'll come down and set my corners where the building's gonna sit. Set me some elevation stakes so I can fire up our big dozer, big excavator, start digging a hole.
And then they'll come back in and check compaction as you go?
Uh, that'll be Atlas. Yep, they'll come up and they'll tell me I gotta do every six inch lifts or 10 inch lifts or more water, less water, just like they're doing out here at the airport. They laid it out and they went back in and tore it up. Laid it out, tear it up. It's, it's all compaction and that's tarmac, so it's gonna have 10 inches asphalt on it.
I mean, you dig down that deep, you're probably gonna get into water, aren't you?
No.
Don't think so.
No, they, I kinda surprised them when I dug the test holes out there in the middle of this winter. I said, clay layer's 12 feet down, that's where the water is. Gotta be higher than that. I go 12 foot down, dug 12 foot down and there's the water. Like you've dug out here before and I go, yep. Had two perk tests out there all winter. No water in the bottom either one and they're eight foot deep. So, it's all sand. It just drained down to the clay layer and.
Takes off.
Goes off into the.
Jeff, where are you gonna go with the, the gravel? Are you gonna take it on over to the south where the shooting range is or where are you going with this to push all this out?
It'll be down there, probably on that lower level or out where the concrete pile is.
There's quite a bit of room between there and the gun ranges there.
Well, we got materials stored down there, which will eventually have to be moved because that's probably where my sand shed's gonna go and working on equipment shed pricing and sand storage pricing and everything else right now. I've been in contact with Scott Klingon. He's gotta move that records retention reefer trailer out there. Or we're gonna move it. I went in it for the first time ever and well, there's, there's some history in that. There's old leather bound hooks and but I asked him to go put some twine across each cubby hole. So when we're moving it, nothing falls out on the floor. We just gotta jack it up and throw a couple of truck tires on it. We'll grab it with the big loader and.
Where are you gonna take it to?
Out in the back corner somewhere, but it'll still be accessible. We talked to Johanna about it. It'll still be accessible. But we gotta move that. We gotta take the sand shed down.
Yep.
So, that's moving along. That's pretty much it. We've been putting culverts in, putting liners in culverts. The road graders have been busy. Should be done with the South Fork crack seal this week. I signed the agreement last year for, you guys signed the agreement for, not knowing that my roads were gonna go to crap this spring. Excuse my French, but.
The roads do that every spring?
Yeah, this is bad this year.
This has been bad.
I have never, ever seen the roads fall apart like they did this year.
How are you doing on staff right now, Jeff?
We're fully staffed.
Awesome.
That's a good thing.
Yep, Steve's, Steve's one person short. Um, yeah, we're full. Got my inventory specialist lady down there now and she's going right at it. She's got some IT background, so it's just, it doesn't seem to be too hard for her to get going.
Awesome.
It's just in time because Mickey's getting ready to go on vacation and I really hated to sit there for two weeks and answer the phone. Now I don't have to.
If you might have said this and I missed it, but when you finally going out for the RFP to build the building?
Uh, that's, that's more insights.
So they're handling that part of it?
Yeah, we're, we're getting pretty close. We came up for a meeting two weeks ago and we sat down and we kinda finalized on how everything was gonna sit in there. Moved a couple of things around. R and Ms.
Involved Jeremy with that?
Yep, Jeremy sat in there at that meeting. I told him I didn't want his IT palace in my back room, but he goes, it's just a little closet. He'll, he'll have a dedicated closet for all the IT stuff.
Dana did send an email out on May 7th. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to review that one?
I was gone.
He's asking, does the county have a boilerplate bid specification package that they want to include in the project manual? You might wanna reach out to Dana and just.
Okay. On the 7th. Yeah, I haven't gone that far back in my emails yet. I'm still working backwards.
And review that and probably respond as soon as you can.
Yeah. So I'm thinking we can kinda do the same thing as how we decided to go with insight. And get some RFQs from different, you know, R and M and whoever else does these steel buildings and.
Yeah, they have a lot of connections.
Right.
Past guys that built those facilities.
Yeah. The only thing basically we're gonna do is dig the hole, fill it back in and dig a trench to put some conduit in for the fiber. Other than that, I don't have time to be doing much out there.
The subs can all take care of the rest.
Yeah.
Okay, we're out of time. We gotta move.
Perfect.
Thank you. Next agenda items, these are action items. The first one is the meeting minutes of May 6th. Everybody get a chance to look at those. They're great to me.
Yep.
I did not, since I was not here, I didn't know what was.
So I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of May 6th. If you say all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I will.
McGinnsey, come on up.
I'll put on that I recue.
Uh, the next one is to sign a memorandum of understanding for the East McCall HF.
Yes, HF R, Hazard Fuels Reduction.
Got one more. What do you, hold on one second. Jeff's got one more.
What you got, Jeff?
There's the page.
That's possible.
Page on each bid. Bid acceptance.
Oh, I wrote it on the outside of the envelope.
Do that real quick.
Yeah, I'll do it while we're doing this. Bring them on up.
Okay.
So go ahead, McGinnsey.
Um, so this is for the Hazard Fuels Reduction for East McCall for $240,000.
240, right?
Sir.
Everybody's good with that?
Yep, I'll make a motion, we sign a memorandum of understanding for the East McCall HF R project.
I will second that.
Move to second it to approve MOU for the McCall HF R project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next one is information collection form.
Yes, so this form assists IDL in meeting their reporting and registration requirements. So I just had to fill it out. I think you guys have it in your packet.
So just kinda the same thing, just I make a motion that we sign the information collection form. The East McCall HF R project.
A second.
McGinnsey, did you print these out?
I did.
Okay, thank you. We'll save them till the end.
What was it?
We'll save it till the end.
Okay, perfect.
Come up here.
So each one of them, just initial and sign it right there. That's it.
Gotcha.
Was there, there's. Doug, did we just vote on that?
Yeah, we did.
I'm writing the right ones. You got me the right ones, right?
Yep. Thank heavens for Mickey.
So Kenzie Freeley, you wanna do, ask me about.
Mickey, I'm on vacation for two weeks. I've never had a two week.
There you go. Thank you.
I don't know. I just wanted to.
Mr. Chairman, there's a motion and a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the information collection form. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next one is assurances and certifications regarding non-construction programs.
Yeah, so all of these are just certifications that Valley County has legal authority to apply for this grant, um, has the capability to deal with planning, just the and you're not this.
You do stuff.
Oh, yeah, all that good stuff.
Okay. We have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion. Uh, sign the assurances and certificates regarding non-construction programs, disbarment. And suspension drug-free workplace and lobbying for East McCall hazardous fuel reduction project. So why is all that in there?
It's basically the general forms that the IDL requires on every one of these grants. So every grant that you guys have signed in the past has required all these.
Oh, okay. This is the one about Israel and China and all that stuff.
It's basically, it's kinda that Forest Service money that gets funneled down to state, but still has all these.
All the stuff hooked to it, yeah.
I, I haven't, um. So were these as part of the addendum at the end of the document that we got? We didn't receive these separately. So I was just questioning if.
These should have all been in one. These are only two pages long, each one or two pages long. Um, so see, it's like the boilerplate and I did send it to Gabby, so it was probably in there, but it wasn't attached to the MOU. They were separate documents.
I don't know if we saw these, but I'm familiar with them, so I'll second it.
Yeah, they're just part of the application process. Hey, we got a motion in a second to approve the assurance and certifications. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
And Doug, do you have that one in your mailbox? Okay, you wanna give that tomorrow or, yeah, get it tomorrow. Let me get it up.
No, you can't sign off anything. Can't hand off anything.
You cannot leave. You're ours.
Hey, you're going too. So leaving you now.
Well, I'm just, I'm aging out.
He's retiring. Where are you gonna get your masters in?
Psychology.
She's gotta do something to psych out those kids.
What was that?
I said, you gotta do something to psych out those kids of yours.
I know, goodness sakes.
So you, your question you had for me was.
We good?
About the fair board.
Um, one, wait, look, one more. Yep.
Okay, so this being the last item on our agenda for the morning session, we will recess for lunch to see everyone back here.